... two thousand thirteen. It is approximately six thirty-three PM. Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Cordova?
Here.
Councilmember Abeta?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
And Councilmember Langro?
Here.
We do have a quorum. If we could stand up for the Capitol legions. Councilmember Abeta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can go to approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda as presented?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Just one change, Mr. Mayor. We did get a request from our appointee to the Airport Board. If you could move that up a little bit further, higher up on the agenda, so they could...
Would that be okay with the first and the second amendment to the first and second?
Yes.
Okay. And we will move that up to item seven A.
Nine A.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda and a second as amended. Any further discussion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, there was already motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to approval of the minutes, the meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, joint meeting minutes. Is there any changes to those meeting minutes as presented?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
None, Mr. Mayor.
None, Mr. Mayor.
None, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to item five B, September twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting minutes. Any changes to those meeting minutes as presented?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
None, Mr. Mayor.
None, Mr. Mayor.
None, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to the citizens forum. We do have a couple of public hearings. Those of you wishing to speak under those items, we will be opening it up to public hearing under those items. Therefore, if you want to speak on both, or you want to wait till that item for the public hearing. So at this time, we'll open it up to the citizens forum. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on the citizens forum? Sir, welcome. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
I see you have your badge on today. What does that signify?
But only one.
That's how he talks to God, Mr. Mayor.
If Mike Silva chooses to run for reelection or for mayor, four of the five who sit in front of me will be on town government ballot in a few months. Not one of you has shown the courage or leadership that our town needs and deserves. Your foolish and corrupt decisions to move the Command Center has tossed our community into chaos, including continuing to threaten our public safety through your incompetence, neglect, all related to the nine-one-one dispatch. You've done nothing to promote a business and economic recovery. You've done nothing to confront the horrors of alcohol abuse, child abuse, racial hatred, and violence. You've cut services at the library and Youth and Family Center. Every move on the Convention Center has been a mistake. The Planning Department has been decimated, and almost nothing positive is done to promote renewable energy. Morale at Town Hall is low. You have failed to reward employees with raises, save the few who can be relied upon to do your illegal bidding. We've had a revolving door of police chiefs, though all have followed your direction in depriving me of my constitutional rights and have overseen the destruction and theft of my property. Through mismanagement and lack of planning, the town finances are pretty much hand-to-mouth. We see no debate or insightful discussions on issues facing the town, though there appears to be illegal secret communications between the five of you away from this chamber. You are here to draw paychecks, fancy yourselves as big shots, and serve your business interests. You display no enthusiasm, creativity, or dedication to our struggling town. Out of consideration to our town, I again ask that each of you resign immediately, or at least prior to January, giving others a chance to run for your five seats. Please understand that you are bloodsuckers and are extremely destructive to our community. Do you have any questions?
Next, can we have the next speaker, please? Sir? Welcome to our meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Jeff left out the fact that we were responsible for the government shutdown, too.
Oh, yeah, we're responsible for that. Welcome to our meeting, sir.
Hi, I'm Bob Breshnahan from Renewable Taos. And I wanted to thank you at the outset for considering the joint resolution on renewable energy for northern New Mexico. Actually, Renewable Taos got the idea for the joint resolution from Luis Reyes, who I understand is receiving a national award, a national award, as Executive of the Year, Utility Executive of the Year, in great part because of our wonderful performance in renewable energy up to now.
That's great.
You know, we've had some good discussions with members of the council, Fred Peralta, who's shown us real insight into the problems that we face in going forward with renewable energy. I am upset right now about our friends at Tri-State. They're proposing a one-hundred-million-dollar-plus transmission line from Colorado down to Taos County. And on their website, you'll find that they claim that one of the benefits of this will be sending renewable energy to Taos County. Now, there are a couple large concentrated solar projects that have been permitted up in northern San Luis Valley. Each of them would generate about a hundred megawatts of energy, and they would be able to deliver energy at night as well. Now, the transmission line they're talking about building is a one-hundred-million-dollar-plus investment. I wonder why we don't build one of those concentrated solar plants in Taos County and save a hundred million dollars. Along with that kind of transmission plant, or generation plant, goes fifty jobs and all of the taxes and income that would go along with having two of our projects that Kid Carson is currently carrying out. You know, it would be about double the size of the project that Kid Carson is carrying out. And I know we all appreciate what that's doing for the county and our economy. But when you have, when you're generating your own energy, all the taxes stay at home. The money, a good segment of the money stays at home, and we'd have fifty permanent jobs. So if you're concerned about global warming, I'm with you. You know, I'm for renewable energy wherever it can be generated, these big projects. But I want to see them take place in Taos County. I want us to have the jobs. I want us to have the taxes. I want us to have all the benefits that can go with them. Now, this joint resolution that is coming up on the agenda is a good place for us to start thinking about how we can fight and move forward to maintain the leadership that we have in renewable energy. It's going to be tough, because there's a lot of competition. But I think we can do it. So thanks for putting it on the agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralta?
If I could ask you just a couple of quick questions. One is, the array that's going up in San Luis Valley, that would be equivalent to how many homes? Do you have an idea for that?
I think that one of those one-hundred-megawatt plants would provide most of our energy, most of the energy of Taos County. Bill Brown, who's in the back, can verify that. He knows precisely what that would be.
The second question is, do you have any idea who is financing that project?
I don't, but it's available on the web. You know, it's easily available. I could get it on my cellphone when I go back to my seat. I don't want to take up your time now. I'll get that to you.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this question is because from the statement you made, you know, kind of ending that we should be doing some of this here in Taos County is to get an idea as to how these things are taking place, so that we can kind of build upon that to get our resources together to try to make it work.
Well, it's a big discussion, and it's something that we should take up and really get into, because the benefits that are available to us right now can go away, you know, if we don't act. So we need leadership. You know, we need you guys to step in and really, I'll play a role. And with the commission and with some of the other people in the county, I think, and with Luis, I think we can make a dent in this thing and move forward. Now, this kind of big generating facility doesn't have to be owned here in Taos County. It could be owned by an investor. But it's precisely the kind of thing that Tri-State buys energy from. So, you know, we could be getting our energy generated right here and have all of these benefits again. So, thanks for your attention.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Bob, real quick, thank you for the interest that you take in Renewable Taos. And I've been one of the councilors that has been the most outspoken, I think, with regards to the transmission line, being quoted in both the Santa Fe New Mexican and the Albuquerque Journal, as taking a stance against the transmission line running through, not only through Taos County, but all the way from the other side of the state and the newly-designated Rio Grande del Norte Monument. We've brought up the same issues as you have, is why haven't they, you know, lifted the cap? Why hasn't Tri-State allowed more renewable energy? And the bottom line is, is they'd rather invest into coal. You know, so I think it's time that we send a large message back to Tri-State and let them know that we are not willing to have them shove this thing down our throat, nor do I think this elected body, nor any elected body within the state. And I say that even with regards to the congressional delegation in my conversations with them, is saying that no way are they allowed to come through the parts of northern New Mexico that they're requesting to go through. So again, thank you, and if there's anything I can do to help, please let me know.
Well, again, you know, that taking, you know, opposing this transmission line is really important. But, you know, the question really is, how do we pull investment money into our county? Investment money, taxes, jobs, et cetera, et cetera.
And I think that lies...
And we need to be thinking about and working to get that to happen.
Bob, I think that lies within, you know, us as, you know, co-op users, getting the contract changed within what Kid Carson's capacity is, to allow more renewable energy to be processed, as opposed to buying out so much of the other energy. So I think that's, I mean, as far as job creation, you saw what it did with regards to the new solar array just north of Cuesta. But the difference is, is that Luis is right there hovering on that cap of what he's allowed in that contract, which I think that contract is very biased and highly in favor of Tri-State.
You know, we could have a big generating plant here, and it would have no effect on the contract whatsoever. Tri-State could purchase the electricity from it, taxes. Sell it to Kid Carson, taxes. Jobs to maintain the plant here in Taos, our children, you know, our grandchildren in the future. Would have no effect whatsoever on the contract. So there are things we can do and ways that we can get around the limitations of that contract. So this is one.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I know I met with you a few weeks ago, and I do want to see if we can get a possible resolution, if it's okay with the council, to have staff look at the effects on this Tri-State line and possibly pass a resolution opposing that. And then also work closely with Kid Carson Electric to pursue this renewable energy initiative. And congratulations to Kid Carson Electric. I was made aware of that they were designated Utility of the Year in Chicago today. So congratulations to CEO and Kid Carson Electric for a job well done.
And Mr. Mayor, also with regards to that and the study, anything that the city does also with regards to, you know, revamps or reconstructs of even our own existing facilities, if we can, you know, look at, you know, as opposed to installing the norm, see what the, I'm sure our cost benefit would be good to do renewable energy as opposed to...
And we're proud to have renewable energy at Town Hall. The solar arrays there and the solar arrays down at the Echo Park as well. Okay, next, under the citizens forum. Ma'am, welcome to our meeting. Mr. Hofstadter, welcome to our meeting. Two for the price of one. Welcome to our meeting, sir.
Mayor Cordova, councilman. My name is Anna Abeta. I'm the chief nursing officer at Holy Cross Hospital, and I have worked in the hospital since nineteen seventy. And I just wanted to address the council, just for a short time. I was present at the, at the meeting that our staff addressed the council as well as the commission. And I was actually pretty saddened by that whole encounter. And I'm not here to try, in any way, that I'm going to try and respond to any of that. But I think what is really important is we have to see the whole picture. We have to be able to see everything and not just from one perspective. And that's the piece that we were missing. So, you know, I have been with a hospital forty-three years. I have seen it go through its worst, as some of you have, you know, and it was difficult getting, getting out of that. I have seen it to the success that we are today, or that we have been and enjoy. And it's awesome. And it's very difficult for me, who has participated all this time, for us to see some of the things that we have to give up. Unfortunately, there are things that we have no control over. Well, just think, if we did have control over the federal government, the state government, we'd probably be pretty good. But we don't, and we have to live within our means. So I guess what I'm here to say is, we can't go back. No matter who our board is, no matter who our CEO is, no matter who our CNO is, we can't go back. Because what we have to do is, we have to build an organization, we have to build a hospital that's sustainable for Taos County. You know, and yes, we absolutely have all the dreams. I've had the dreams myself. I have worked with my staff to make a lot of those dreams come true. And it's not easy for us to let some of that go. But the important thing is, we have to have a hospital. And we have to be able to support and sustain that hospital. And we have to be realistic. So I guess what I'm here asking you guys is, I know that we are, you are looking at doing a task force. I'm asking that you involve us, so that the whole picture is out on the table, so we know what we're working with. The last time we had a really difficult time in the hospital, it was because our ability to work with the council, work with the commission, work with our community, that we were able to make it. And that's the way it has to happen again. I look forward to being able to participate in that committee if, you know, if you choose to ask me to be there, because I think there's a lot of history, and there's a lot of knowledge of the hospital that we have to know in that committee. And knowing the whole picture is so important. And you didn't get the whole picture. So, thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and just quickly, Anna says things certainly a lot more eloquently than I can. But really, our point was, and we met with the county commissioners last week and wanted to come here tonight as well, and just say that as frankly our elected officials, I think we're asking for your help. It's time to sort of change the tone and the tenor of the conversation. As Anna said, we can beat up on boards and quorum and CEOs and all those things. But ultimately, we're the only hospital in the community, we're the largest employer with a payroll of over twenty-five million dollars. And I think what I would ask is, as we go forward, is to really sit down and genuinely learn how the business works and what's happening before we start throwing everything out. And just a couple of quick examples for you, and as Anna said, I'm not here to go back and forth, who said what and who didn't. This whole government, this whole state, sole community provider, indigent funding, we're supposed to be paid, all the hospitals are supposed to be paid in September. None of us have seen those payments. In our case, that's over a million dollars that is sitting out there, that you're floating again for another month. The other thing that I think is really important to understand in this business is, in the state, this is by the state's own calculation that they talked about to the Legislative Finance Committee this summer, is the state figures that by, through Medicaid, they cover between fifty-five and fifty-eight cents of cost, of a hospital's cost. In our case, if you add Medicare to that, they cover about eighty-three cents a cost. So I would challenge any of you that are in business, that if sixty percent of your business pays less than cost, how do you make that business work? And I would argue that frankly, we've done a really good job of that. Have we been perfect? Absolutely not. Could we communicate differently, better? Absolutely, and we'll certainly work on those things. But I think it's important, as we go forward, to really look at all of those things and how this thing works and what makes it happen, before we start tossing everything out. Because it's a, it's a really, really good, strong, vibrant organization with a lot to celebrate. So that's really our message, is really to help try to change the tenor, change the tone, and try to, you know, move forward and really look at what makes sense for this community and go from there. So that was it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody have a comment? Yeah, we're going to be passing a resolution. Is that what we're passing? It on the agenda, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, later on...
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, later on in the meeting, I...
Structure. We're passing a structure, the structure. And does that include?
Yes.
Members of the hospital administration?
It's identified in the...
Two board members.
Yeah, I'm going to be recommending later on a composition of that board, based on input I've gotten from everyone. Two members representing the hospital board, two members representing the county, two to the town, and on. I'm not recommending, at least in there, that there be two people specifically for management. We're assuming that we're going to be working together, getting information, getting briefed on the information and the analysis from that.
I think it's absolutely necessary to have members of the administration, even if it's just one, to be, you know, the board is there, but remember, the board does not do the operations of the hospital. So I would just ask that you think about adding at least one member of the team.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
And then we can't speak for the board, so that's, you know, that's really their decision going forward, so.
Good. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next, under the citizens forum. Sir, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of council. My name is Fritz Hahn, and thirty or forty years ago, I worked under Anna's supervision at Holy Cross. And this is our community hospital. I want to hand it to Peter. We've been emailing each other back and forth with pretty intense questions that I'm sure has started his day early and kept me up late. So I want to commend the hospital for reaching out. I agree with what Mrs. Abeta said. However, there is caution for a continuing dog and pony show. I'm not suggesting that that will happen, but there are difficult questions that need to be asked. Peter can share those with you as well as I. But one simple, and perhaps not so simple, question is, I'd like to know, as a citizen and as a council candidate, what Quorum's net profit is. Peter and I have been talking about that a little bit. I'll just stop there. That's a difficult question. I totally agree, totally agree with Peter that we need to raise the level of discussion from one of subjectivity and avarice to logical, straightforward thinking. There has been a history of managerial abuse at our hospital. It's one of the reasons Quorum came in twenty years ago, was to begin to straighten out that inherited mess. And certainly, Peter has inherited a mess. I'm not here to say that I agree with Peter, but I will say this. He has reached out, he has answered my emails, he's invited me to Quorum's and so on. I'd like to know if Quorum, for instance, has any interest whatsoever in the hospital's purchasing group, a group known as HPG. I think this is important citizen information. I'm going to bounce back and forth. I didn't think I'd be speaking, but I am very grateful for our citizens who sit on the board. They're not paid. They maybe get a dinner a year, whoop-de-doo, you know? So it's a big commitment on their part, and some of you have, or at least one of you have sat on that board. And for that service, I'm grateful. As you can see, this is a sample of ten or twelve pages that Peter and I have been going back and forth on. So there's not a lack of communication, that's for sure. I'll bring it to a close here, because I know other people want to speak. One real big issue and question I have is that we have contracted physicians on staff. And I'm just kind of wondering, and this isn't the forum for it, but some of our employees at the hospital were laid off, and yet contracted physicians are not expected, at least in this moment, to take a hit. There may be plans for that in the future, but there's a level of scale here. And speaking of scales, I'll just close with this. Holy Cross's layoff ratio was much higher than the University of New Mexico's ratio. And as a citizen, I just wonder about why that's happening. So if, if we could raise the level of discussion from mudslinging to facts, figures, understanding, and collaboration, I think we can find a solution here that'll work for, first of all, the patients who go to Holy Cross, the community at large, and the employees and physicians, and administration at Holy Cross. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, under the citizens forum. Anyone else under the citizens forum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Gustorf. I am also with Renewable Taos. And I would like to talk about two of the items on the agenda. The first one is, is our joint resolution on renewable energy. I'd like to thank the mayor for first suggesting that to us a while back. And of course, I want to urge you to vote for it, because as Bob Breshnahan alluded to, I really believe that developing renewable energy is probably the single best thing we can do for the whole economy of Taos County. And passing this resolution, I think, would have quite a few benefits. It would increase public awareness of the need for and possibility of renewable energy. I think it provides an area on which there is broad agreement between the various governments in the county. You know, if we can work together on some things, it might make it easier to work together on other things. Commits the governments to work on a planned transition from fossil fuels to renewable energy. And it should greatly improve all of our abilities to negotiate with utilities, state and federal governments, to remove obstacles, including the five percent limit, which we've talked about before. And so it would actively promote their development. So I hope you will all vote for it. The second one I want to address is ordinance thirteen fourteen, temporarily suspending enforcement of, basically of the, as I understand it, the HERS rating systems. And I would like to urge you not to vote for that. I mean, houses that we put up today or this year are going to be with us for fifty, a hundred years. And so this is not the time to be building less efficient houses, which are going to be emitting more greenhouse gases and costing people more to heat and operate, you know, for the next two, three, four generations. I understand that HERS certification can be a little cumbersome. But having just made a few phone calls in the last two days since I became aware of this, I have heard that there are, there are at least two certified HERS inspectors in Taos. There is a, I've been told, I don't know them personally, there, I've been told there's a Mr. Stout who works with Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. And I talked with Carl Polonius, and he said it's quite possible that some arrangement could be made with the town to have him do it. And I believe there's a woman who is a certified raider who will be speaking when this resolution comes up, or this ordinance comes up. So I would ask you, at the least, to postpone passing this ordinance until we can do a little bit more investigation and find some solutions. I also talked with Matt Foster, and he said... I also talked with Matt Foster, and he said that another possibility is that there may be equivalent systems that are easier to administer and could result in the same levels of energy efficiency. So I don't, you know, I really don't think that doing this at this point is a good idea.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else under the citizens' forum? Like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on with the agenda. Next, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Michael Cabral. I am a Energy Efficiency Program Manager for Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, recently applied this position. And in light of this ordinance, we're discussing to postpone. Right now, our inspectors and auditors are ramping up their education and their certifications to comply with the government programs that are administered through the DOE and MFA. And the courses which we are taking fall in line with these lead certifications and the ability to conduct these HERS. So I have some questions out right now to see what it would take. It may be simply us applying for the certification because the education that we are putting our inspectors through falls in line with it. As soon as I can get that clarification, I will bring it to Oscar. However, I would also like to present for the town that when it comes to renewable energy and energy efficiency, the most valuable dollar is the one that's never spent. And I had actually approached the facilities manager some months ago about having an assessment done on the town. I know that the performance-based contract, which is something that is recently gaining ground here in New Mexico, has not been officially presented, but I have a gentleman with Siemens Corporation that would be interested in addressing the council. Well, they will come in and do an assessment on the town and then provide a guaranteed performance-based contract where they will ensure that any type of, any type of energy dollar that is spent right now will be compensated after Siemens comes in, addresses all of the efficiency measures that the town needs. And whatever your current monthly bill is, the savings will pay back Siemens on a long-term contract, which is guaranteed. So in any month that they do not meet that contract guarantee, Siemens picks up the expense, not the town. So the dollar spent by the town will never increase. It's guaranteed in the performance contract. This is all ran through DOE as well. And if so, I would also like to present that thought, you know, that the most efficient dollar is the one that's never spent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for comments.
I have a quick question.
Got to come up so they could hear you on the microphone.
This is from First Village Meeting, Town Meeting.
Please state your name for the record.
Melissa Ames.
Okay. Thank you. You may proceed. Welcome to our meeting.
I am, I was going to ask, are we to the portion where we're talking about the HERS rating?
No.
No.
No, that's further than the agenda.
So go sit down.
And we'll call you up. No, you may speak now or you may hold your comments until then.
I will hold my comments until we, okay, yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else under the citizens' forum? Mr. Foster?
Address the council now or would you prefer I wait for the point for the?
If you'd like to, it is going to be a public here, and we're going to allow comments. So if you want, it's up to you.
Once again, I have my boy here. At least been to enough council meetings.
Okay. We sure, sure welcome their comments now. Okay. Thank you. Welcome to our meeting, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to just address the council and thank you and good evening and encourage you to postpone any moratorium and offer whatever, you know, assistance I can. I have a lot of friends and colleagues in the community that have a lot of great ideas other than the moratorium. There are more emerging HERS raiders coming around in the community. There are reasonable alternatives that I think will not be a burden to the builders and won't slow down residential development. I spoke to the mayor of Edgewood. He extends his greetings to you, and he's very well-versed in CID and prescribed codes and construction and design. He offered his time to you, Mayor, to talk about the HERS rating and what it means and different options and so on. So I do have a very brief letter just encouraging you to not put a moratorium on the high-performance building ordinance and at least this portion of it, and offer whatever help I can to help with your staff and look at alternatives and not only not put a moratorium on the ordinance, but expand the code to allow different alternatives like it does for commercial buildings and other possible resources. So I'll give this to the clerk and appreciate your time. I'm going to get my boy, get his homework done.
Thank you. Matt, I appreciate your willingness to help us out with this issue. You mentioned the issue of that'll foster building and not hold it back. And that's, I think that's what prompted this whole thing getting on the agenda is the availability of HERS inspectors and the, the problems that it was causing for inspections and holding up the builders.
Correct.
So we do believe in the HERS rating system. We do believe that it's a good thing, but we just want to make sure that, that it doesn't hold back the builders, one, and create a problem as far as affordability to get to that level for the average homeowner.
I understand those concerns. I think there's another way to do it besides a moratorium.
Yeah, great. Okay. Thank you.
Good job this weekend, too, Matt.
Okay. Under the citizens' forum, anyone else? Mr. Lucero, welcome to our meeting.
I think you know who I am. I just want to make a couple of comments about the renewable energy stuff. I do believe that it's a good thing that we tried to establish a plant here like they're trying to do in Colorado. However, it has to be like the one in Colorado that has batteries so that it can provide power at night. What Luis is building here today is not reliable. You know, it can't be used at night, so that's the one thing. And the other thing that I'd like to talk about is with Tri-State. Again, I commend Luis for taking on the fight with Tri-State because they have treated the co-ops in New Mexico like stepchildren is what it boils down to. So I hope that he continues the fight on the rate matter structure. But as far as the transmission line coming down from Colorado, there's already two transmission lines coming into the Blueberry Hill substation. The redundancy is already there from PNM and Tri-State. So there is no benefit that this community can gain from building that line from, from up north to the south. The only thing would be is if the power is supplied by a reliable renewable energy source. So that would be the benefit as it's not that way here currently from the generation that's going on locally. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And, you know, you're absolutely correct that there's absolutely no benefit to this community. I spoke with the members of Tri-State who are trying to position themselves to try to start gaining, gaining community support. And I said, look, you're not really looked at really favorably in this community. What is, what is the benefit to this community? And they were very clear that the only reason they were bringing this transmission line is to help their southern Colorado area.
That's, that's correct.
So there was absolutely no benefit.
There is no benefit to this area. And quite frankly, as a former manager of Mora San Miguel Electric Co-op, starting the fight against Tri-State, it took eight years for us to get them to pay for the Rainsville Delivery Point in Mora. And we finally got them to pay fifty cents on the dollar for that construction. But that is something that they should have been doing because they are the transmission supplier.
Sure.
But they wanted to make the co-ops, the local co-ops, pay for that, and that's just not right. Kit Carson is going to have that opportunity to ask Tri-State to pay for their Ocaliente Delivery Point that was put in two years ago. I hope that that's the way they go, but we're treated badly.
Sure.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else under the citizens' forum this time? Seeing none, we will close the citizens' forum and move on with the agenda. We'll go to item nine A. And that is appointment of airport advisory board members. The appointment, appointment of Lindsey Webb to the airport advisory board to replace resigning member Ken Blair, and reappointment of Tim Cotum and Mark Fratrick, whose term expires October thirteenth. These appointments will expire in October two thousand and fifteen in accordance with town code two twelve zero twenty. Oscar?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, as you read, we have two appointments to fill on the airport board. It's a very exciting time at the airport board. We have those two members here.
If we could come up and, Mr., also, I didn't see Mr. Cotum in the audience. Congratulations also on Kit Carson. You're, you're currently not on the board, right? Or you're on the board still?
Oh, I am on the board.
You're, you're on the board. Yeah, 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 and I apologize. Congratulations on the accomplishments, Utility of the Year Award that I just heard was, that you guys received. So congratulations on that. And then also thank you for willing to serve on this. Chairman Don Francisco Trujillo could not be here. He says that it's a wise selection, and he looks forward to serving with you and welcomes you as chair of the airport advisory board. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I'm honored to be reappointed to the board. I'd like to welcome Lindsey. I think she'll be a great, great asset to the airport advisory board.
And I just want to let you know that if we can do a special at our next meeting, an acknowledgement for Ken Blair, who served on the airport advisory board for thirty-four years, and told me that one of the reasons why he was thinking of resigning is because he finally felt that the airport issue was going to be resolved, and that is coming to consensus with the pueblo to, for the airport expansion, the safe runway that we're going to be building that's under, under design right now. So thank you. Appreciate your patience during your tenure when you served on the board. You know that that took a long time of negotiating and stuff. So, you know, if we could do a special recognition for, for Mr. Blair.
In the case of Mr. Blair, it seems we're going to have to do something very special because he's coming also off of the largest tax advisory board. So he, he's coming off a lot of boards that he's given, given many years of service, and we're going to have to do something very special for him.
Absolutely. So if you could come up, we'll formally welcome you to the, our town staff. Welcome.
I can make such a call.
I just.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I guess we need to formalize your appointment, so I am moving that we accept the appointment of Webb and the reappointment of Mr. Cotum and Mr. Fratrick.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second. Also, Mr. Fratrick is no stranger to the airport advisory, airport. He was the director for many years, so we welcome him as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you. Okay, next we will go to, back to the agenda. Item seven A, and we will go to consideration of possible approval of amendment number one to contract thirteen one forty-nine with Phoenix Mechanical. Oscar?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we're changing slightly, a little bit the way we do business here. Previously, the town would work with two separate HVAC contractors, one to operate the, or maintain the town's ice rink, and then another one to do whatever, you know, work had to be done as, on a, as needed basis throughout town. We're putting all those together in this one contract, and what we're doing is we're utilizing a contract that we started last year, we opened up last year as a result of a procurement process that we went through. And so what we want to do with this is raise the amount. If we put both those contracts into this one single contract now, it'll exceed the sixty thousand dollars that requires to come to the council, so we're doing that now. And we're also extending the deadline or the end of the contract, contractual year to coincide with our fiscal year and not just the calendar year. So we're recommending this. So basically, this contract then will be sort of a task order contract on as needed basis. They, they, we find something that needs to be done, they give us an estimate, and we give them okay, not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, Mr. James, this meets all the procurement issues?
I believe it does, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions in the council? Entertainer motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to item B, consideration of approval of contract fourteen one twenty-four in the amount of forty thousand four sixty-two with La Tierra Landscaping for Operations and Maintenance at the Taos Eco Park until June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Oscar?
Yes, sir. You'll recall, Mr. Mayor and council, that this summer, when we were negotiating the extension of the contract for TSA, the Taos Sports Alliance, where we were considering adding to that contract the maintenance of Eco Park Field, including the grooming of the artificial turf there that takes some very special care. At that time, TSA decided that they did not want to do this work, that they wanted to just focus solely on the promotion of that field. And so then what we did is we did a procurement, a very short bid procurement to have somebody step in and do that, particularly the, and the people who bid were the people who actually do the grooming of that field. And so that went for two months. We spent about ten thousand dollars for that. So what this contract does is that it extends to the end of the fiscal year that contract. And so with that, we'll be able to provide the maintenance that we have to do there just to keep that field going, but as well all of the landscaping, et cetera, that goes out there. You'll recall that the amount that we had talked with TSA was a, was a higher amount than this, some sixty thousand dollars. So after we get done with this contract, we'll save close to ten thousand dollars as a result of Tierra. And by the way, we just think that, for those of you who have gone by Eco Park the last couple of months, you'll notice it is practically spotless over there. They're doing just a terrific job. We're very happy with the work that they're doing, so we recommend approval of this contract.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I just want to say that, yes, our Eco Park really is looking much, much better. I mean, it looks great. So thank you to those that are, are getting that done. It looks, looks really, really good. Entertainer motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Next, we will go to financial update. Mariana, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, town manager, youth councilmember. You have in front of yourself the report for September. Just a few highlights on the revenue side. For the month of September, our grocery receipts tax increased five point zero four percent over last year. The highest classification was in food and accommodations, a forty-two thousand dollar increase in money over from last year also. For the first quarter of this fiscal year, we are at a six point eight six percent increase over last year this quarter time. Just with some information, we already have received October's grocery receipts tax. I don't think I've sent it out yet, but we did get that in. Based on that, with four months of activity, we're ready to do a projection through the end of the fiscal year. And just to give you a little bit of information regarding that, how we determine that increase, what we did was we took a twelve-month average of a percent change from November last year, from November twenty-twelve to October twenty-thirteen. So we did that and came up with about a three point five two percent increase. We did a couple of other different calculations to come up to making sure that that was a good average to use. What we did do is we did take the outside, the increase of the thirteen point nine nine percent that we received in August from June's receipt, and we reduced that to a three percent, so we wouldn't skew our projections through the end of the year.
In other words, the Mumford effect.
Yes.
We said that's a little unusual. Let's not be so aggressive with our projections, and let's just say it went three percent, not thirteen percent.
Right. So we took that into consideration. And as we calculated it last year, we took a five-year average also of the percent, average percent of the revenues that are collected monthly. So we took a lot, a five-year average and got that to come up with our percentage of what we anticipate at the end of fiscal year. So right now, we are anticipating a one point eight percent increase over all of the grocery receipts increments that we receive. So what we did is in the original.
Mariana, just, just to give them a point of reference here, what we had projected in our budget was a one percent increase.
Right.
What we're saying, based on the information that we have right now, we can, we can, we feel safe in projecting that that increase is going to actually be one point eight percent.
Right. One point eight percent. And just to give you an idea, what we actually budgeted was nine million, nine hundred thousand. So based on this projection, we are anticipating ten million, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars of grocery receipts tax. So that is that one point eight percent increase. On top of that increase, though, we do have, like we've mentioned before, a deficit in the library fees collection. We anticipate eighty-five thousand dollars of revenues not being, being shortfallled in that. So between those two net, we're looking at more of fifty, let me see here, fifty-seven thousand net increase in revenues. uh, let me see here, fifty-seven thousand net increase in revenues. Other than on the expenditure side, we haven't really looked at any, pretty much everything is running on track on the expenditure side. The other side on revenues, that we probably will come back maybe at mid-year, because we don't have enough data yet, is the convention center revenues, that we have recorded in general fund, we got to wait to see what that will come, you know, come about with the negotiations with U and M, but based on, if that does happen, we may be looking at a shortfall of about forty-five thousand dollars in that, in that, but until we actually have true decisions made, we, we don't really know yet.
And, and also, just so you'll know, there are two revenue sources that we're going to be looking at that are affected, depending, depending on the, on, on the final terms that we come to with U and M, and that is the actual fees, the rental fees that we would get by renting Baton and Rio Grande Hall, as well as revenues that we would use from the Lodger's Tax. As you know, we use some of the, those revenues to pay for the personnel that, that are assigned to, to those, those facilities, and so, at this point, until we know when it takes effect, exactly how it takes effect, can we adjust our expenditures on that side, so, that's kind of still open.
Right, so that's, that's a little bit outside of, it is part of general fund, but we do have to wait for all those decisions to be made. Another side is the Historic District Fund that we recreated, obviously we know we're going to be short on revenues on that because we haven't done the whole meter program, and hopefully we'll get that in effect July first, so we've already anticipated what we need to, what's not going to happen on that one, but we'll bring that back at a later date too, once we get all the purchasing done and the items actually received and the meters installed, or all the replacements. So, on the revenue side, that's how it's looking, like I said, you can see mainly capital projects and big expenditures you have in front of you, we did purchase the new airport tractor for sixty-three thousand dollars, work on the aircraft, airport passive aircraft monitoring system, and a new fire truck, and just other miscellaneous repairs. Other than that, I stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Marietta, yeah, this is great news for the town, it's, I think, our fourth quarter in a row that we show increases?
It's...
Yes.
It's yes.
Yeah, and our Lodger's Tax, I heard it was up substantially compared to Santa Fe's and the state average, we were up substantially, can you give us a brief, what that Lodger's Tax looked like?
Um, do you...
Yes, it's, it's up double digits there, and even, even if we take out the money that was paid late, for example, by, by establishments that owed some of the Lodger's Tax, by the way, thanks to the Taos News for putting that out there, apparently that created a little, a little movement of people catching up with, with the, with the money that they, that they owed, so, yes, we are markedly above in terms of our rate, markedly above Santa Fe and, and the rest of the, of the state, we're looking at, at about a sixteen percent total of all of the, the money that was owed that, that month, or that quarter, plus what was owed in past quarters and was paid in that month, about sixteen percent increase.
Whereas the state, I believe, was down seven percent, and I believe Santa Fe was down double digits, like twenty percent, that's what I understand, so, so it's, it shows that people are coming, it shows that our GRT is starting to correct and, and get on the right pace, so, it's great, great news.
And, Mr. Mayor, council members, I will, on next month's report, at least have a little bit more summary on the Lodger's Tax, since I know the last couple of months you've asked, and I've focused really gen, on general fund, but I'll have that for next month, a little bit more detail on the Lodger's Tax also for you.
And it clearly shows that our marketing efforts are working great, so, Councilmember Palta.
Thank you, Mayor. Marietta, just a couple of quick questions, and thank you very much for the information, it's very important for us to have this, and looking forward to some of the issues that are coming up before us. The question I have, though, is that you have some revenue bonds for twenty acres of land that matures in two thousand seventeen, but I don't see it broken out in, in which balance that's at, so what is the balance on that and, and the payment amount for that particular bond issue? Do you have that?
Um, yeah, I have my budget on my chair right there, do you mind if I grab it?
Sure. The reason I'm asking that question, Mr. Mayor, is that that's the first bond issue that we have outstanding that will mature, and the first time we'll have a chance to look at doing some rebonds for some purpose.
Sure.
Well, she's getting that information, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I'll just point out to you, on the next agenda item, we have our monthly performance reports, and you have there a monthly performance report for marketing, and it shows how we do it in comparison to Santa Fe, et cetera, it's quite a detailed projection, and you can see we're, we're going in a totally opposite direction as everybody else around us.
So, the annual payment of that is a hundred and thirteen thousand seven fifty-seven on that one for those twenty acres.
That's the balance?
That's, oh, the balance is actually, if it comes up in two seventeen, we have fifty, I'm just looking, one, two, three hundred is the balance, I'm saying three twenty roughly.
Roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year payment?
Yes.
Okay, and, and, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask one other question, Marietta, the Commin' Real Building, we had, was the last payment on that this year?
Uh, no, we have, I think, two more years on that one, this year's and the following year.
So, so we pay this one at the end of the year?
Uh, I'll double check, but I, no, I think it's this year and then thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
No, but the payment is due this year?
January, yes.
January.
January, it's due every year, January, every month.
Okay, so it'll be January fourteenth and January fifteenth?
Fifteenth, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On that note, Councilmember Palta, I know, I think, I believe it was at the budget hearings, the council may have suggested to look at options for these twenty acres, including selling, or the possibility of selling that, and we've set up a meeting with real estate person that may have an interested buyer on those, so we're looking to see what, bring something to the council if those talks bring up something that we feel is, is beneficial to the town.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Beta.
Thank you, Mayor Cordova, thank you, Marietta, a couple of items, state law requires that we have one twelfth of our general fund at the end of the year, and that's thirty days, and we're projected to be fifty days, so that leaves us in a very healthy position, the town of Taos is not broke, in fact, we're in pretty good shape, GRTs are increasing, and we are headed the right way. Number two, Marietta, looking at the library, you're projecting there a shortfall of eighty-five thousand dollars on the library card, and we definitely missed the math there, we thought this would generate a hundred thousand dollars of revenue per year on the rev, on the library card, and it's only generated fifteen thousand. Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we place that on the agenda for a possible rescension of that policy.
Okay.
It's, it's not working, and if it's not working, let's change it.
We'll look at that for the next meeting.
That's all I have, thanks.
Uh, on the note of the two twelfths, the one twelfth, by state law, we're required to have one twelfth, and it's always been a practice to have two twelfths, I, I think, under previous administrations, and we've leveraged some of that other dollars to get matching grants and so forth during this hard economic time, so, since we're there close, I'd, I'd ask for council direction to, to, as a policy, to, to have the manager bring back something so we can get it to the two twelfth reserves, so that we're solid the way the, we've, we've always operated, if that's okay with the council?
I'm okay with that, Mr. Mayor.
And, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beta, thank you for pointing that, I had that on my discussion too, but I think I went over on my revenues, but it is true, and we do have fifty days, and we are building that up, and, you know, it is equal to fifty days right now.
Yeah, it, it only takes ten more days and we'll be at the two twelfths, and that's what the mayor's indicating, and it's an excellent idea, back to the library, I mean, we tried it, it didn't work, let's change it.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? So that will be on the next agenda, do we need to bring anything for budget adjustments, or we just use the reserve, the extra that's coming in to bring, allocate that to the reserves, correct?
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you say nothing at all, that will go to, and stay in the reserves.
And I would like to make sure that that remains a priority, from a financial standpoint and a management standpoint, that we keep that as two twelfths.
Okay.
And hold that harmless, if you will. Okay, any other comments, questions? Thank you, Marietta.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, council members, town members.
Thank you, Marietta.
Okay, next we will go to Oscar, who will provide department monthly performance reports. Oscar.
Uh, yes, sir, it's...
Lecter, before we, before we begin, just welcome the deputy town, county manager, Mr. Rick Bellis, I didn't see him in the audience until earlier, so, thank you, welcome to our meeting.
Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we are just continuing with the newly instated practice of reporting to you how each of the departments is doing on a monthly basis. You'll notice there that, that this month, we've added one other department to the, to the list, we're, I've, I've been working with the departments to prepare this report and, and to get something meaningful to you, and so, last, last month, we had six departments, now there's five departments, that includes the IT, and with that, what we're measuring is actually, every time something goes down, we just actually count that, and so we think that that reflects the job that's being done with IT. Nothing particularly outstanding with any one of these other, marketing, if you go to the, the marketing report, you'll see how our trend line has, has spiked upwards dramatically, while the, the state and Santa Fe are, have been rather flat now for some time. Anyway, that's the most significant development that I would point out to you for the department monthly reports, and again, I, just once again, I would invite you to, to look at them, to, to provide me any comments you have, so that, you know, we can adjust them, and so that truly it has information that you feel is meaningful and, and gives you a, a good idea of what's happening in the departments, or in terms of their performance. I have nothing more to add to that, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments, questions, Councilmember Silla?
Question. Mr. Manager, what do you attribute the, the sharp increase here, is it our marketing plan, I mean, obviously we're doing something right, but what do you attribute it to mostly?
Uh, I, I think we're, we're now doing something right, I think there's, there's a lot of focus now on what we do with that, the decisions that are made in terms of what we buy, what's promoted, and the outreach that's made, are made with the pressure of being able to show return on investment, the, our marketing expert, Griffin Associates, understands that so long as these trends keep, are, are positive, that we deem that to be a good job, if they're not, then they're not a, you know, they're, they're, would be deemed not to be a good job, and so, as a result, there's really sharp focus now about, about doing things that really actually increase Lodger's Tax and increase the two other indicators there, which are the stories about Taos in major media markets, and as well as people visiting taos.org online, and so I, I think it's, I, I want to give kudos to everybody's involved in this, by the way, it's not just Griffin Associates, they, they are the experts here, but we do work with community groups who themselves also put money into these efforts, behind these efforts, including taos.org, the Taos County Lodger's Association, and others who actually have some skin in the game, and so there's a lot of sharp focus right now on, on making sure that where you spend your money, there's a, there's a good bang behind that.
Okay. And before we get to that, let me, on, on that note there, we should work and establish some dialogue with the county on revamping their, the way they distribute their Lodger's Tax. We changed that paradigm on how we distribute, before it was done, just organization to organization, without really measurable or quantifiable deliverables, if you will, and I think that the, the commissioners expressed a desire to, to do something like, you know, what, what we're doing as well, I mean, and maybe that perhaps can be a collaborative effort to put all the Lodger's Tax dollars into a cohesive plan that has some benchmarks for, for deliverables, you know, so, so I would certainly encourage you to, to work with the county staff to explore some ideas and opportunities, to just put more money into a focused effort on marketing our community.
All right.
Okay. Councilmember Palta.
Yeah, effectively, Mr. Mayor, Oscar, a couple of things, if you look at your graph on unique visitors to taos.org?
Yes, sir.
Uh, down at the bottom right, there might be a typo there.
Uh, yes, two thousand thirteen, yeah, two thousand fourteen, yes.
The second thing is, I'd like to have a definition of what unique visitors are.
Okay, sure, because there's, there's different types of visitors, there's visitors who come
in and just hit the website and then come right off, and then there's others that, that will go into the website and go into different sections, and there's a definition for, for each type of visitor that comes in, and so, to understand what a unique visitor for the populace, I guess, in a sense.
Yes.
And for us to, to know what that really means, and how that translates into the potential for actual people coming to Taos.
Uh, yes, sir, you, there's many ways you can dice the number of people come to visit your website, and there's all kinds of services that, that measure that very precisely, the one that we decided on was the number of people who come there, whether they, they go there and then they bounce off, or they go into that website and go down deeper, to measure those people who have not been there before, and so, in, in that way, feel that there's good, fresh, uh, traffic to those sites. Now, the reason, one reason people don't actually go into the site is because we do spend a lot of effort to, to, to make sure, and even on that first page, you, you quickly get to see what's happening in Taos, and so a lot of people just get their information that way, when they're here, et cetera, so that's what unique visitors mean, and people who have not been to those websites before, and the, the services are, are able to measure that pretty, pretty accurately.
I, I would like to have information about the people that spend at least forty-five seconds on the website. Those are people who I feel are truly interested and didn't get to the website just by accident.
Four to five minutes.
No, no, seconds.
Seconds, four to fi, forty-five seconds, I'm sorry. All right, yes, in, in, in that world, forty-five seconds is a lot of time.
That's right. Okay, any other comments, questions? Thank you, Oscar. Next we will go to, oh, before we go to that, Oscar, our police department.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting some, some calls about the panhandling on one, one Largo, and I got an email today again, so, I just want to congratulate and, well, thank the chief for your diligence and responsiveness to the merchants there in dealing with this issue, I know that it gets hard resource-wise to put an officer full-time there, because, you know, addressing the issue, but the concern that I'm hearing is that they hate to be a, a burden on dispatch calling every single time, and, and so, so what plan can we get in place, chief, so that we can address the issue long-term, rather than being reactive to it every time, and these merchants feeling that they're just bothering dispatch every time somebody sets up shop and starts panhandling in front of their business?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Mayor, myself and Mr. Kennebeck met with the merchants yesterday, and to kind of, to, to kind of set the stage, where the police department is in the process of trying to develop its strategic plan right now, and so, some of the steps have been to talk with the elected officials, obviously the appointed officials, the officers and the command staff, and now this next step was to begin to speak with the merchants, following that, we're hoping to pair up with U and M, from U and M hoping to do a community survey, and so from this whole deal, I'm really trying to figure out what is, what's the focus that the community wants us to focus on, from talking to the merchants, I expressed to them, obviously, that a function of law enforcement is to create an environment in which merchants are able to do their activity and do their business in a fashion that's conducive to the town, so, meaning that, we need to create an atmosphere where visitors feel safe. One Largo and the people that are there have posed a problem, and so, we have begun to address that issue with the merchants, we're trying to figure out the best way to deal with this, because the weather's starting to get cold, that problem is beginning to subside, but I want to make sure that we have a plan in place for next spring, so I've charged the command staff with creating the, a plan or a program, so that we can actually have higher visibility with those individuals, actually identify subjects that are in, in that area, to, some form of way of developing intelligence or, or surveillance to see if we have illegal activity and to make, make an immediate response to that.
What about our parking officer that we have for, I know he's not a certified police officer, but can that be a means of looking into that?
Absolutely, and I really, I mean, I really encourage the merchants, because I heard them saying, listen, we don't want to keep bothering dispatch, and the message that I've sent out to them is, I don't know the full extent of the problem unless I have all the data, so I've really encouraged them to make sure to call as often as they can, and let me know what the issues are, they also have my phone number, so they can contact me, so this process really is, like, like many things in law enforcement, is developing as much information as I can to get the complete picture. I was surprised, perfectly honest with you, I, I went to one of the stores and actually sat in the store and looked out a window, and, uh, un- to one of the stores and actually sat in the store and looked out a window. And unfortunately, I was surprised at the amount of activity that was going on. It caught me off guard.
I understand that one of them even resulted, undercover sting resulted into an arrest, correct, for drug activity?
We've had a couple arrests down there. We have begun the implementation of undercover activities. And part of that plan really was, part of the decision is, are we going to set up an undercover operation and then actually enforce it immediately? Or are we going to give it some time, then enforce in a big group? And we began the implementation of that, and that's when the weather turned cold and when a lot of these people kind of left away. When I was in the store watching it, and like I said, I was very, very surprised. I underestimated that problem, and not something that's going to happen again. But as I watched it, I waited for an illegal activity to happen. Sure enough, I had someone began cussing and yelling, so we had disordered conduct. I moved in and was able to disperse everybody out. And then, when I was talking to patrol staff, I was like, that is what we're doing. If they're there law-abiding, then by all means, it's an area for them to public gather. If they're not, then we have a duty to enforce them, a duty to get them out of the area. So, obviously, this is kind of, we have to be cautious, obviously, because this is an area that's designed for people to congregate.
Sure.
And at the same time, we have to create an environment where people feel safe.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Chief, while you're there, I just wanted to mention that I'm looking over your police department monthly report with regards to activity within the department. And I want to give you some kudos with regards to the report, because it shows a lot of downward trends. And contrary to what, you know, Mr. Northrop just mentioned in the public forum that, you know, we turn a blind eye to domestic violence, crimes against persons, property crimes and whatnot, yet we see a decline. And I want to say that that's largely attributed to the fact that we have a lot more community policing. And number two, I want to say that maybe some of that, Mr. Mayor, is in effect with regards to what the economy's doing in the uptick in GRT. And I would say that with regards to the biggest one, which is property crimes, which shows the largest decrease, as opposed to, you know, four years ago. And then, looking at domestic violence, too, that's on the decline, if not right now, from your start, it's flat.
Yes, sir.
Crimes against persons, that is also on a decline, and I'm happy to see that. The one that I am a little concerned with is the traffic collisions. And with regards to, there's a pretty decent spike in that. Do you know what that comes from or what that's leading from?
I don't, sir. Not at this point in time, we don't. And it has been my contention that the biggest threat to visitors to the town Taos and to the citizens are traffic collisions. I really believe that causes the most amount of traffic, most amount of dollar loss, most amount of injuries to people. And so, there really is a focus that I want to work on. Last month, we did do what's called a step project, a selective traffic enforcement project. And so, what I did was, the year previous, I found where the best majority collisions occurred, what time they occurred, and what the collision actually were. And we found it mostly to be rear-ending collisions in Pasayl Pobleso, in the area of Siler to about Pasayl Canyon-ish. We also found the hours to be between about 11:00 to 1:30. And so, I challenged the patrol staff and the supervisors to show higher presence and actually deal with that issue. And sure enough, they stepped up their plate, and we were able to see a decrease for this month. So, I was real happy to see that. Actually, the patrol staff was happy to see that, where they actually had an immediate effect upon the citizens. I really need to, we need to really invest a lot of time into traffic safety and see what we can do to lower those rates. Also, from talking to the merchants yesterday, their big concern was on pedestrian traffic and pedestrian crossways. And I share that concern as well. So, I think of the number of things that we're going to do, and what I'm thinking that we're going to find in the strategic plan, really is a hard focus on traffic safety, combined with other aspects of delivering services.
Mr. Mayor, I think with some of that, with regards to, you know, it's something that's been focused on the downtown master plan quite a bit, is making it a lot more pedestrian-friendly. And I think with regards to that, I mean, maybe more visible pedestrian crossings. I don't know how we can, you know, that downtown area gets pretty congested. But, you know, just recently, where we had the accident up by Walgreens, you know, there's some areas there with regards to how we develop, Mr. Mayor, with on the main corridor, that even with regards to traffic studies, we probably should look at, you know, a little bit in-depth, a little bit closer, because, you know, the bottleneck that happens within that area, too, people trying to cross all the way over from the lane, getting out of Walgreens, you know, I just don't think that that traffic light gives enough, you know, relief with regards to that area. There's been collisions there, you know, the high school's another one. There's just that real short corridor of area. Now, we have the new housing development going on, which is going to increase traffic even more. You know, there's some areas, Mr. Mayor, that I think we probably should look at, and with regards to just slowing people down, or, you know, timing of lights, I don't know what we can do, but we got to, we got to start looking and figuring out something.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know what the solution is to Cruz Alta and Pasayl. I've sat at that light, because that's my street to get out of my home. And I've sat at that light and watched people, five seconds after the lights turn red, run a light. And this is not just on one isolated occasion. This is almost common thing. And the majority of those people who run that light are going south, not north. So, I don't know what the problem is there. I just can't see it, other than maybe people just don't think there's a light there or something. But it's just getting to be a common instance of something happening at that light. And I've seen it all times of the day. So, it's not just that 11:30 to 1:30 lunch hour, trying to get back to work. But it's, I don't know. It's just very, very upsetting, because I'll sit there, if I'm right at the light, I'll sit there and wait five minutes before I'll take off into that intersection, especially if I'm going south.
And, Mr. Peralta, and gentlemen, at the time when I was a motorcycle police officer here, that actually was probably one of my best fishing holes that I had, was to sit there and watch the southbound traffic. And that, and then there's a handful of roads where I could guarantee that I could sit there and with very little effort, get a whole lot of citations. And I've really pondered that intersection, and you're absolutely correct, it's southbound traffic. And I don't know, I don't know why citizens don't recognize that as a hazard. I don't understand this. It's a conundrum.
And there'll be a car parked, you know, stopped in the middle lane, and somebody will go right by him in the outside lane, just there.
Mr. Mayor, what about, you know, creating, and I don't know how we sit on overtime and whatnot, but what about, you know, setting up three or four officers there on a day like today, when it was nice? And, you know, having just, you know, them just dispatch and pull people over one at a time? You know, I think the only way to raise the awareness is to correct the problem.
Right.
And it's to make the awareness happen within those areas. You know, the other one is, you know, we've, traffic has just become so bad and bottlenecked even within town, that now you see the relief routes, what we consider relief routes, is Salazar, Placitas, those areas. But there's a lot of individuals that come to a stops and not stops, you know, it's a pause-stop. And, you know, so those are areas, too. I look at areas within, like around Monzanadas, where Inos Garcia's Middle School is, you know, there's huge safety issues with regards to kids and crossing 3:00 in the afternoon. I understand everybody's trying to get out, get back to work from picking up their kids, but at the same point, somebody's going to get hurt.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you.
Mr. Mayor, if there's anything we can do to kind of raise the awareness with regards to traffic, whatever you can do, chief.
Get your fishing poles again.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. And if you don't mind, chief, if you can just follow up with those on my email to the merchant that emailed me, I sent you an email, so. Thank you. Next, we will go to item 8A, Public Hearings, Ordinance 1314, temporarily suspending the enforcement of Chapter 15.04. Oscar.
Yes, sir. This summer, the council, excuse me, this summer, the council asked me to look into the increasing complaints we were getting from area builders that they could not get HERS inspectors, and that that was causing delays. At that time, they were very concerned about this, because, you know, the way the construction season goes here. And so, we've looked at this. We have our new plan director in place not to look at this very carefully. And so, what we decided to do was then bring the item to you, so that you could have the option of suspending enforcement, asking us to go maybe a little bit further, or any other direction you might give us. There are, there are, there are two, I think it's important to just kind of point out here, there are two different construction sectors. There's the commercial and the residential sector. In the commercial sector, the builders have options. They can comply either with leaps, or with HERS, there are two different systems for achieving energy efficiency. In the case of residential construction, though, there's only one option, which is what makes it very difficult for them. And so, one of the options that we're looking at is to allow the same sort of things with commercial, also maybe doing some things out there to create or to foster more HERS inspectors out there in the community, and a couple of other things. Anyway, I won't basically make the same report I've asked the plan director to make here. So, without further ado, I'll just pass it on to her about the things we're looking at.
Martha, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Cordova, councilors. It's the town staff's intent not to prevent green building, or less of, or encourage less of energy-efficient housing. We're just looking for options, particularly with residential construction. As Oscar was saying, with the commercial construction, there's a LEED certification, or as I've highlighted here, which is the current code, a builder may submit an alternative high-performance building design and construction standard, provided that the builder receives written approval from the code administrator to utilize such alternative standard. That does not exist for residential construction. We need to have the HERS raider. And the HERS raider is where you, it's a two-step process, where you obtain a building, when you obtain a building permit, you must project the HERS rating that you're going to obtain. And then, with a certificate of occupancy, you have to make sure that you have performed at that rating. And so, what some of the contractors have requested is for us to possibly look at alternatives for residential building with the HERS requirement, and have something similar to the commercial. This ordinance was advertised as 15.04, which encompasses both the residential construction and the commercial construction, because we couldn't limit just the residential. If you look here under live-work units, builders of live-work units shall comply with the foregoing requirements for residential structures if, after an evaluation by a HERS raider. So, we couldn't, you know, pull out those sections. We had to look at the whole section, 15.4 as a whole. And then, there is an alternative to the HERS rating, which is paying fees in lieu for both residential and commercial. But I think the intent is that we want to encourage green building. We want energy-efficient buildings. We don't want contractors coming in and paying fees in lieu of an energy-efficient building, just because they can't find a HERS raider locally. What they're ending up doing is going ahead and going to Santa Fe, Albuquerque, somewhere else to get the HERS rating done, which is extending the cost of constructing a house.
Concerned with the availability of, or the lack of the availability of certified HERS raiders, it was causing them to have delays in their projects. But also, they were having to seek out raiders out of the Taos area, either Santa Fe or Albuquerque. And that's really what the problem is, and that's where this stems from. I think that in the industry, with technology and products, I think that efficiencies have just gotten better, just because of the availability of products that are out there in the competition. I think we're seeing a move to become more efficient. So, I think a lot of that problem is taken care of itself. But I understood from the gentleman with Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, if you don't mind stepping up just for a second. You had mentioned earlier that you all were working on getting certified. How close to that are you?
Well, we are working along with MFA and DOE to advance our certifications for the energy efficiency programs that are being rolled out through the agencies that are currently in effect. And as we're going through those certifications, the courses that are needed to become HERS certified mimic some of these courses that we are needing to get our inspectors and auditors in place for this program. So, I think it's a matter of just speaking with the university and saying, okay, if these are the courses that we have, what are we lacking, so that we become HERS certified? And it may not even be a course that we're lacking. It's just a matter of, well, we didn't know you were looking for that certification, apply for it. So, we do have one of our auditors, Mr. De Herrera, who's going out to complete his certification at the end of the week, this week, so he's got that specific question to carry on to MFA, Michael Firs, you know, he leads that for MFA, to find out where exactly are we. But I believe if we can get this cleared, we can have two certified inspectors within a month.
See, Mr. Mayor, council, I think that's where the problem is, is just the need for these certified HERS raiders. And I think, once we take care of that need, I think this becomes a moot point. I think then that, I personally think that six months is a little bit too long to suspend this. I'd like to see it maybe a month or two, just to give these folks a little time just to get certified. And I think that's, that would fill that gap, and that would fill the need and not delay projects for contractors. I don't think that anybody's really opposed to the charges that were being charged to them by certifiers prior to a couple of, I guess, moved out of town, a couple of certifiers moved out of town, one took on another type of business. I don't think they're opposed to the costs that they were incurring. It's just the lack of the people that were certified. So, I would recommend that maybe if we do suspend it, it's for a very short period of time.
And if I may say so, you know, on behalf of Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and the energy efficiency program, we would support that as well. We do see that, as a nonprofit, we, this is a service that we would be more than willing to step up and help provide. And being as a nonprofit, that kind of limits the risk and exposure to other outside influences in getting these certifications completed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Councilmember Beto?
Thanks, Mayor Cordova. Thanks, everyone. Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, we really have a twofold problem here. Number one is a short-term problem, where we don't have HERS inspectors. But the secondary problem that's even more concerning is that if the requirement to meet HERS standards drives up the cost by 15% to 20%, that is a big challenge for an area like Taos. So, I stand by, ready to listen to whoever's going to speak, and see if you can offer alternatives to that. And we really need to be, we got to make sure that we don't exclude anybody from owning a home in Taos because of cost. It's already a high-cost area to begin with. So, I have grave concern with this 15% to 20% increase in cost. So, maybe one option would be to make it voluntary. And if a home's built out of 2x6 and it has R19 versus R23 insulation, R19's still okay, even if you can't afford the R23. So, we need to be very careful when we look at that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I would open it up to public hearing. I'm going to, due to time, I want to make sure that we be efficient on the public hearing. We're going to allow everyone to speak. But if we can put a two-minute, and then, of course, you know, if the council wants to ask questions from those speakers that, in their professional capacity, we can do so. So, we can, and we just ask your cooperation with that. So, sir, we'll go ahead and ask you to come up first. We do have to follow some procedures for public hearings. The clerk has to swear you in, since you're under testimony.
Angelo De Herrera.
I'm trying to tell the truth.
Yes, I do. Okay. My name is Angelo De Herrera, the energy efficiency auditor for Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. And I've worked in for six months within the Taos and Northern New Mexico community. A lot of these houses we work on are in bad shape. It's just simple procedural errors that are made in construction, you know. I think having these ratings are good for the community. R19, I feel is like a D minus in math when we're going to building code. We could do better than R19 in a house, you know. And I feel like the cost may not be 15%, 20% over cost, you know. And I feel that this ordinance shouldn't be repealed at all. I think the homeowners of Taosties are better than a D minus.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you. Yeah, and just for the record, we're not repealing it. We would just allow some time to get that HERS certification from those that are interested in pursuing it. So, sir, we'll go ahead and have you come up, and then we'll go to this lady here. We'll go, and then we'll go to her.
My name is Joaquin Carden.
Do I what?
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm a design professional, and I've been living here for 22 years. And all of our projects are LEED-certified, mostly actually to either gold or platinum standard. And some of the projects are even zero energy. They go far beyond LEED. Now, I want to clear up some of the confusions here that I've been hearing, some convoluted facts. As a matter of fact, there is no, there is no, we're not talking about two separate things when we talk about LEED or the HERS rating. The HERS rating is just a rating system that is applied to a home where you can predict the amount of energy that it consumes. And it's a very complex energy model, computer model, where you actually input the R-values and U-values of windows, of foundations, of insulation in the wall, in the ceiling, in air tightness that has to be measured by a blow door test at some point, and so forth. So, the HERS rating is actually an integral part of the LEED rating system. It's part of it. You cannot have a LEED, you cannot have a LEED certification without a HERS rating. And the HERS rating is not a set standard either. It's actually a sliding scale. So, a HERS of 100 is basically a home that is built to code. HERS of 90 is like 10 percent better than code. HERS 80 is 20 percent better than code, and so far. And basically, through the quality of the building shell, you can easily achieve a HERS rating of 40 with no problem. And since I've been doing this now for more than 15 years, I can tell you the upcharge is no way even close to 10 or 15 percent for a HERS rating, a good HERS rating, which I would say a good HERS rating for us is really a HERS 50 and lower, to my standard, is like the minimum. So, what we're talking about here, a HERS 70 is nothing. I mean, that's easy. That's, you know, that's really not a big challenge. And, you know, we have never had a problem to find a HERS raider. We have never had a time delay. If we can't find somebody in Taos, then we go to Santa Fe. But this is, this is a short, you know, there's a certain, you don't order your windows the day before you need them. You order them four weeks ahead of time. That's the same thing with a HERS raider. You know, you need, you just have to plan this, and if builders complain about that they can't find a HERS raider, or that they think it drives the construction up, to me, those are excuses. I think that all of these things have a learning curve, and we just have to all move up to, step up to the plate and learn these things. A lot of them don't even cost a single penny, like air tightness costs a bunch of tapes and some knowledge, but really, mostly, it costs knowledge. It costs to understand how buildings work. It's the science behind how buildings work, and there's really no price tag to it. So, I just want to make the case here to let you know that this is for me and for my colleagues that work in the green building arena, that we're proud of what we're doing, and we want to even step this up and progress it and not take it back.
Joaquin, real quick, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on. Hold on one second. Councilmember Silva first, and then we'll get to the other.
Couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
Just real quick. Thank you for your input. That was very helpful. Are you aware, or do we have any certified raiders in our area?
I believe we have two.
Two? I mean, if we could make, or if they could make themselves available, or at least get their names to the planning department, I think that's really all we need. The other thing, just for the viewing audience and my own knowledge, a rating of 70 would be an increased cost of approximately how many dollars, or percentage-wise, maybe? I mean, that's a tough question, but...
I would say maybe 3 percent.
Okay.
Maybe three, maybe five percent.
So, it's well worth the investment. You get your return.
The thing is that the payback times that we were talking, I mean, yes, there is a little bit, a little bit more money has to be spent upfront, but the payback times are, this is amazing, it's a no-brainer. It's like five years, you know, five years or less.
You can't afford not to do it.
Yes, you can't afford not to do it. And the plan, the plan can't afford not to do it, and we can't afford not to do it.
Thank you.
Joaquin, I want to thank you for coming to address us tonight, and I really appreciate the fact that you took time out of your day to come and do it. Mr. Carter's a little modest with regards to his profession, but he does hold a master's degree in architecture, and he is one that I've seen in my line of work that extremely outdoes every form of aspect of green building, so I want to thank you. I would also like to invite you to please sit in and help us with regards to making this code more efficient. Because I think your input and your knowledge with regards to the vast areas that you've studied in would immensely help us, you know, in perfecting it, but also creating a model that would extremely work well within this region. And I know the projects that you have up and coming, even the projects that you've worked on, represent that model extensively. And so, I want to thank you for coming to address us, and we look for any help you can give us in guidance.
I'd be glad to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Hi. I'm still Melissa Ames, and I swear to tell the truth. Well, I am the HERS raider for Taos. I live in El Prado. I just recently became a HERS raider. I am so excited about doing this. I built my own house. I did a design-build, and I worked on the crew. And it just changed my life. To give you an idea of what energy efficiency can do, for about $107 a square foot, my two friends and I built this house, and last winter, we ran our heat for about three hours a week. This is averaged over the entire winter, starting November 1st, ending May 1st. And we burned less than half a quart of softwood. So, this is, and it stays cool in the summer. And so, I would argue that, no, you do not have to put tons of money into a house. I have not rated it yet. I imagine probably that I'm going to get it rated pretty quickly. I won't do my own house because I want it impartial. But I would ask you to please keep the requirement that plans be HERS-rated and scored before they're built. They actually do need to have the HERS scoring after they're built as well to test to be sure that they still meet the criteria, the score that they promised to do during the planning stage. And if you come in over the score, it is possible to do other things in your house that will bring that score down. We really can't step backwards in a path toward energy efficiency. We just can't do it, even at this fairly minor level in a fairly small town. People that don't have a lot of money for heating will benefit greatly by an energy-efficient house. They also benefit greatly by the added comfort of even temperature, no drafts, all those wonderful things that a poorly-built home does not give you. And so, I might say that it does cost a fair amount of money to become a HERS raider, and it costs a fair amount of money to stay a HERS raider because of the insurance involved. This is primarily, I think, why people don't do it, because we're not, we just don't build these huge projects that they do say down in Santa Fe. And you cannot probably make a living doing this up here, and I understand that. But I think it is so important that we work toward energy efficiency. I think that we need to keep rolling forward. I think that as the years pass, we need to increase our drive to get this, to get this community in particular to be a real leader in energy-efficient buildings. And that is pretty much everything I wanted to say. But yes, I live in El Prado, and I have my equipment. And so, the one other thing that I might address is the turnaround time. People say that it is, it delays the process of building. Contractors don't like it. I work with a HERS provider down in Santa Fe, who basically does one-day turnaround. You send the numbers down, they generate a report, it comes back the next day. So, this pretty much eliminates the problem of holding up the contractors and holding up building. So, I hope that I've addressed everything.
And are you available for contract, for instance, as a HERS raider from the town of Taos for a contract? And what do you charge per inspection? Or is it based on the contract?
It is based on what I actually have to do. And because I'm so recently certified, and I'm actually working under the auspices of Steve Onsted at Evergreen Building Technologies in Santa Fe, and he has been coming up here. He is working with a project right now, and he says, well, every time I come up, I have to charge $175 just to get there. And since I have become a HERS raider, we have, we've worked out a way that I am working for him, but I am up here. So, that would be something that we would need to talk about.
Okay. And I was unaware of that, so I would encourage our staff to see if we could utilize those services.
And you'd be creating a job in Taos.
Okay. Okay, great.
We like that.
And congratulations on your certification.
Thank you. Thank you. It was challenging, and it was fun, and it's just the joy of my life.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Mr. Rose. Welcome to our meeting.
Stephen Rose.
Testimony, you're about to give us a truth.
I do.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm in the process right now of building a home in Valverde Commons. It's one of four that are being built there now. The most recent one was started just a couple of weeks ago, and one was started about two months ago, and another one was started a month before that. None of us has had any trouble getting a HERS raider, although one of them is, one of the HERS raiders is Steve Onsted, who was just referred to. He's from Santa Fe. But he is available for anybody doing construction projects here. We're going for a LEED Platinum certification, and as Mr. Carter said, a LEED does require a HERS rating as well. So, you can't really use LEED as an alternative. It does require HERS. I think that in the long run, requiring HERS ratings has a cost benefit. It is, it makes a home more affordable to live in for the homeowner, because the energy used in the home is much less, and the monthly costs for utilities are much lower. I worked with a couple of you on Habitat for Humanity, and I think you know my concern and wish for affordable housing in our community. I think that it will help to have a HERS rating to make homes more affordable. I think there is some slight additional cost to make a home qualify for our Energy Performance Code. But I don't think that cost is, for 70 percent HERS rating is anything like in excess of 10 percent. If you're going for LEED Platinum, as we are, yes, it probably is in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 percent more. But I think for a HERS rating of 70, which means it's 70 percent, it will use only 70 percent as much energy as the average home built in America, that that cost penalty is in that 3 to 5 percent range. And I think the utility savings are going to be very much more than 3 to 5 percent more in the, at least 20 percent area. I think it's a great thing that we have the High Performance Energy Code here, and I urge you not to pass this ordinance and to keep the HERS process in place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else under the, under the public comment section? Ma'am, welcome to our meeting. Please be sworn in by the clerk.
Please state your name for the record.
Alex Henry.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us a truth?
Absolutely.
Mayor Cordova, Councilman, thank you for having me here. My name is Alex Henry, and I'm an architect in the town, in, actually, in the county, but I've been working within the town as an architect for quite some time now. I was one of the people that helped author this ordinance, and I'm here to say that I would like to help you come up with a solution. So, if you feel like I can provide some assistance, I would be pleased to do that, you know, on a volunteer basis. I do live in a house that's completely off the grid. My utility bills for last year were $150 for the year. And I think that this is pretty fundamental to living in a happy, healthy way, and I think that it's quite important to maintain this ordinance. So, I would love to help in any way. And I can provide my card to whoever.
Please do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your willingness to help. Anyone else under the public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, councilmembers.
Mr. Mayor, I, after listening to the testimony tonight, I think with regards to how we encase this, I would like for us to maybe not do anything for the moment and get some of the members in the community that have, you know, offered their help to us to help modify and make this thing as useful as possible and beneficial as possible to the community.
Councilmembers, especially the fact that we do have a HERS raider certified in the community, that that's really the reason that is for moving this, bringing this up on the agenda anyway.
Two, no.
Two, no.
Two raiders.
Two raiders, yeah. Potentially Rocky Mountain as well.
And so, with that, I think if we can form, you know, some type of a roundtable discussion where, if we can meet over the course of the next couple of months and just kind of really hammer it out so we can tighten it up, I think it would be really, really beneficial.
Mr. Mayor. So, councilmember, well, let's get some more comments and entertain a motion.
I was just going to ask if I can make a motion.
Okay. State your motion.
Move to deny or not approve.
Table.
Or to table.
Table.
Okay.
To table. We have, I think we have three options. We can table, we can continue to the next meeting to see what solutions in the event that there isn't any solutions. I'm just looking at options. We could table, deny, or continue.
In light of the testimony today, I move to table.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
This is a public hearing. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor. No discussion on the table, move.
Yeah, there's no discussion on the table. So, we'll go to, and then we'll...
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Beta?
Yes.
By the vote of four on the affirmative, none of the negative, the ordinance is tabled, I believe with direction to move on this quickly, and correct me if I'm wrong, councilmembers, move on this quickly so that we can see if we have a process in place that'll ensure that builders are not held up because of this requirement. Is that, is that the way I understand it?
Not only that, Mr. Mayor, but to also get more definitive definition within the code itself as to what it means to the builders themselves.
Okay. And if we can have that on the agenda for next meeting, as far as where we are on, just an update. just an update, just an update of where we are. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, general, general discussion. There was some comment tonight about alternatives to, to HERS and I would like to those people who talked about that to give some specifics to our planning department about ways that, or whatever the alternative is to that rating or scoring, so that it can be, it can be considered if it is an alternative or is it just different language. So that's, that's the only comment that I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Beta, you have a comment?
No comments.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we will move on, so the motion is tabled, the ordinance is tabled, and thank you all so much for coming and giving your opinion and expertise on this issue. Thank you very much. Next, we will go to item B, consideration of possible approval of Resolution 1341, a resolution revising fees, policies, procedures, and regulations governing septic discharge at the Taos Valley Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility. Oscar.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just to do a little background here, you recall this is an item that came to the council last week, at the last council meeting, just a few days before and after it was posted. For that meeting, we had a group of local haulers come to us and ask us for more time so that they could study the effects of what we were proposing and if changes needed to be recommended, that they would have time to do that. And so that's, that was the recommendation you had from us, the council went along with that, and so since then, we've had a series of meetings, including one just recently, outside this meeting with, with the haulers, with all the haulers. And so what you have here then is the ordinance we're recommending. Apparently, there's, there's some changes that, that some of the haulers anyway are going to be requesting later on. I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, French, Francisco Espinoza, to come in and brief you on the meeting we just, we just had here. Anyway, just to be absolutely clear, at the last meeting, we, you heard a lot of comments somehow that gave the impression that there was, there was no regulation, that it was just a general scout's honor, if you will, that people would abide by over there in terms of reporting, et cetera. And that's not, that wasn't the case at all, that's not the case at all. Everybody who dumps their sludge at the treatment plant does so via a card, there's a pre-approved process, people apply for it, they give us a lot of information of where they are, who they are, who their permits are, and the capacities that they have, et cetera. And then they, in order to dump, they slide their card from there, they put their, what's put in there is metered, they get a monthly bill from a utility billing office, they pay that bill, and so we've got a good record of this. And if I may just go back just a little bit in, in history, because I did ask some of the people, as well as my predecessor, about how this was in the past, and one thing that they made clear to me is that, look, it's, it's important to take into account just where this situation was way, not that long ago, where people used to, the course of least resistance was to put these things in the, in the arroyos and to other sites out there, and it was a big problem for us. And so what the community did is they, they made sure that the haulers were accommodated and so now we have them dumping where, where they should be and things are, things are in a good process. And up until now, we have no, there's no experience of, of somebody dumping something in there that's, that's so toxic that it shocked the, the treatment plant. We don't have evidence either of, of significant cheating, for example, that was suggested at the, at the last meeting. And so from our standpoint, it's been a steady, a steady process out there. And so what, what we've been trying to put in, in place here is just new standards, just new procedures based on best practices out there. We're copying the experience of Santa Fe and San Juan and Farmington. And so what you have here then are basically those procedures, either the procedures that have survived over the years or new ones that we're recommending from over there. So there's just a couple of main changes that, that we put in here, including that a lot of this activity will take place under the supervision of staff, in other words, when there's staff there, and that there are limits now and that's, when you hear the presentation, you'll understand why we put those limits there in the first place. And so at the last minute, we did have some, some recommendations or some requests by the haulers to, to change the hours that you see in here, and I'll, I'll pass it on to Mr. Espinoza to, to go over those sorts of things there. But anyway, we, we think we're ready now to, to recommend this to you tonight. And so without any more, I'll ask Mr. Espinoza to just review the, what's in here, the requests that are made, to make, to the changes that are being proposed here. And then we'll also ask Mr. Martinez here to explain to you exactly why the limits are in place. For example, there's a limit of 30,000 gallons a day and 10,000 gallons per hauler per day, and then there's a, there's some very specific biological reasons for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Mr. Espinoza, welcome, Mr. Martinez.
May I ask one question real quick, Oscar? With regards, and this is something that Councilmember Peralta brought up at the last meeting and still something that I didn't see within the content of, of this, is I understand the use of the card swipe to get into the facility and I...
And to dump, actually, to make the meter go.
Okay, so I understand that and I understand the fact that the haulers themselves are charged with the task of keeping an audit trail as to where their, their, their dumps came from, but does the city require anything to know exactly where they came from? I mean, that, obviously, that card reader doesn't, you know, give an audit trail as to, you know, what addresses those, those were picked up from. Is that something that we can institute in place so that we have an audit trail internally of knowing where, where our stuff comes, where their stuff comes from as well?
What we require is compliance with the state rules, and it's in those state rules that require them to keep the logs.
But we don't see it.
We don't, we don't see it unless we, we have to. In other words, that's, that's not something that, that, right, we don't keep that log ourselves, but it, we believe there's enough information that's generated out there should we see a shock to the system, that we can go back and identify who did that and then ask that person to produce.
So would it be too burdensome to, to, to request that?
Not so much to us, I think there would be a, well, anyway, I'll let the haulers themselves speak for, for keeping those logs with us.
I believe that's, I was gonna say, I believe that's part of the resolution and under the manifest, requiring that each, a manifest must be filled out for each pump location and it must be submitted to the town. Correct? So that's in there already.
But is that on a monthly or is that on a per load? Right?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna turn a sheet to you every time we dump?
Mr. Peralta, Councilman Gonzalez, we do get manifests for every load, so at this time, I actually gave the clerk's office six months of manifests for a public records request. Their six months are actually currently at the clerk's office right now. So we do have those manifests and they do have the residents of where they did pick up. So we do have those manifests.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, Youth Council. Thank you, Oscar. I think Anthony addressed that, that concern. The, the septic haulers do fill out their manifest and it is presented to, or given to the, the attendants at the wastewater treatment facility. And what he was referring to, there was a public records request that came through requesting those manifests and they were turned over to the clerk. So with that, as Oscar mentioned, there were a couple of meetings that were held with septic haulers after the last meeting and where we discussed the, the changes that staff would like to have implemented over at the wastewater treatment facility. At present, we are, we are working off of the old Resolution 0335. I believe I made that available to the, to the mayor and council by way of email so that the, the changes from the old to the new could, could be compared. Before I get into that, I wanna, I do want to inform the governing body that over the last decade and then some, we have operated without violation at the plant with its general operations, as well as with any of the septic haulers that are coming in. And fortunately, we have not had any type of terrorism or major faults at the plant that are attributed to somebody trying to sabotage. So we did get in a temporary fence as Councilmember Beta had directed at the last meeting. It took us a while, we did, again, we, we did get it up, we posted the hours of operation, so we're, we are up and running. In addition to that, we did go out and solicit the three quotes to get the proper chain link fence out there and the proper gating and things of that nature. So we'll, we'll be engaging in that project here in the next couple of weeks. So again, the, the, the major changes from the, from the old resolution to the new resolution are obviously the hours of operation. In the new resolution, we're requesting that those hours be 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM Monday through Sunday, that's a seven, a day a week operation. Closed for town observed holidays.
What's the hours again?
Mr. Mayor, it's 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, seven days a week. Okay? And again, this information came from the last meeting that we had with the septic haulers and this is what they agreed to with, with the understanding that within six months we come back and, and revisit that, and there's, there's a couple of reasons for that, I'll go over those later on in my presentation. So on with the changes, we, we changed the tank capacity and we made it more of a streamlined process. This will eliminate additional gallons not being recorded from, from a 1,500 gallon load, for instance. If they dump 1,500 in the dump valve or in the actual valve, it doesn't matter, they're still being charged for 2,000 gallons. So that eliminates the, the possibility of, of washing out their truck, extra gallons and whatnot. We did, we did add an emergency clause in there or dollar amount in the event there is an emergency, it would be charged out at, or billed out at $100 per event, plus whatever they're dumping. The other major change is the limitations to the service area, which is, which is in the old ordinance, but again, the change or the addition is, is that each septic hauler would be allowed to only dump up to 10,000 gallons and combined it would be 30,000 gallons per day. Again, that is based on some, some information, or not some information, the information that came from EPA, and Oscar alluded to that in his opening remarks, that Anthony would define what that, what that means. And with that, those, again, those are the major changes. The, the ability to bring it back within, within six months is, again, something that we agreed to during these meetings, the, some of the septic haulers feel that the hours of operation are very limited, especially during the winter months. If they go and have to pump out a septic that is after hours, they risk the possibility of having, having that septic freeze in their tanks with, without the ability to, to dump. So again, we, we have very little information to support that, but after tonight, we hope that we will proceed with, with this resolution and we will start to monitor the activity closer. And with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, we'll stand for any questions.
Okay. At this time, is there any questions? This isn't a public hearing by form of that it's a resolution, however, I will allow some testimony, so you don't really have to be sworn in, but just state your name for the record. So would the council want to ask some questions now or open up the public hearing?
I'll wait till later.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir, I was just gonna ask Mr. Martinez to just go ahead and explain to us why the 30,000 gallon a day limit, I mean, we are following some EPA guidelines, but Mr. Martinez, who's an expert in these matters, can explain to us exactly why 30,000.
Unfortunately, there is no specific amount of septic that you can actually define because each septic tank is going to be its own entity. Because what I have in my house is not going to be what, what Councilman Silva has in his house, so each septic system's going to be operating a lot differently. Based off of the, the guide to septic treatment and disposal, based off of EPA, a 1,000 gallon tank of, of septic being hauled is roughly about 35,000 gallons of raw influent sewage. So based off the calculations and our capacity of our plant of 2 million gallons per day, we're looking right around 1.4% of our total flow. So that would be the 30,000 gallons that we'd be limiting. We're trying to, to help spread out the, so to speak, the wealth, so to speak, in terms of asking and having each septic hauler vendor limited to 10,000 gallons. The reason for that...
Per day, per day.
Per, per day. With the 30,000 gallon max capacity for the, for the day for everybody. The reason for that limitation is to help limit the, the shock loading on, on the plant because like I told you before, with 35,000 gallons per 1,000 gallons dumped, that is a very big loading on, on the plant. Especially with it being right there at the head where it's, there's no time for the septic to dilute and actually become, because it's anaerobic bacteria versus going to an aerobic system, it is a massive shock on the system. So that's what we're, we're coming off of. Unfortunately, I can't give you, I'm going off of the guide from EPA because there's no, each tank will be this, there's no guarantee a septic tank will have this amount of solids, this amount of BOD and anaerobic bacteria.
Now, we are also basing this on the actual experience that we've had here in Taos. The most that we were, the maximum amount that our logs show that have ever been dumped there in one given day is 26,000 gallons, and so this puts it up at 30,000 gallons. And so we're confident that, that that gives enough of a, of a cushion. Either way, I mean, 26,000, that was a maximum, but normally the flows are considerably below that. So we, we think this is, gives enough of a maximum, at the same time takes into account the, the experience. If I may, I, I just want to emphasize one thing that French said here, and that is the entire time this, that we've been operating here, we have not had a single case of somebody doing something terrible to the plant. And so therefore, the measures that we're putting in place here, we, we deem them to be reasonable, given the experience, given where we are and given what it is that we're dealing with. Of course, we could step these up much, much, much more, but I just wouldn't be able to recommend them to you as a, as a, as a reasonable response or reasonable way to handle the business that's been coming to that plant up until now.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Being that they are kind of allowed to access the facility through key card access and, you know, to the information that French brought up with regards to the, to the winter hours and, you know, late pickups and whatnot, isn't there a way through that key card that we could allow access beyond the eight to four to maybe like a seven to seven or eight to seven? And after seven o'clock, that thing times out and then they'd have to call, you know, the, the public works standby?
Well, just to be absolutely sure, part of what you've heard here is, is the current practice and then also what's being proposed to change. The current practice is that they're, they go there and they swipe their card simply to open up the valve and for, and to get the meter going. What's being proposed here is an arrangement where, where those gates would be closed during, during non-business... during, during non-business hours, open otherwise, and, and they would then again use the, the card. And that is to make sure that there's at least some staff person available to be able to provide at least a very basic, uh, oversight, uh, of, of the operations, uh, that are there right now. Uh, for us to, um, uh, go beyond that, I mean, would take a considerable more investment so that, you know, it's, it's all perfectly, um, automated, you know, with a card, et cetera. Uh, but, um, again, the, the idea that people go there late at night as well, as, as French was saying, uh, is, it's, uh, we, we, we don't think that's a, that's a very common practice at all, that, that happens very rarely. And, um, and we've made provisions for that to happen still, and so, um, we think that ninety-nine percent of the, of the occasions are going to be, uh, the normal, uh, procedures here, but we do provide for these extra, uh, hours, uh, with extra conditions so that the staff person can be there. Uh, at least that much oversight, we are recommending at this point, that, that happen when there's a, a staff person there.
Okay. Councilmember, uh-
Maybe a couple of questions have already been answered for me, but is there a staff person at the treatment plant seven days a week?
Right now, Councilman Pedalta, uh, the plant operates based off of business hours, uh, Monday through Friday. On weekends and holidays, a staff member actually does go in, but on a limited basis, and that is to operate the belt press. So that staff member is there either three hours, four hours, but it all depends on the solids inventory in the, in the system. So, uh, if one of the staff members gets there at eight o'clock, he could be easily gone and monitor the system remotely by, by noon.
So, uh, the reason I'm asking that question is, uh, the fenced-in area that now that we have or will have better, uh, that is going to be hand, uh, unlocked and locked, correct?
Yes, sir.
So on weekends, what's, how are we going to handle that if we're going to run an eight to four, seven days a week?
Based off of my understanding, Councilman Pedalta, that, uh, we will operate it while we're there, and then, um, at four o'clock, the staff member will go back and, and lock up the gate for after-hours operation.
So if we have, uh, a emergency dump after hours, is that, is that a hundred dollars in here, the total charge for that service, or is that in, above the dump charge?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pedalta, it's, it's in addition to the dump charge.
And also, you may be interested in this information, uh, we receive about fifty-four thousand dollars a year with that, with all of that.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, is it because, you know, you're going to be paying somebody overtime to go back over there and lock and unlock every day?
Yes.
And, uh, I just want to make sure that that's covering the cost. And the way this is written in here, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's, it's above the regular charge, so you might have some language change in there to, to mean that that's going to be a, a, um, up-charge over the normal dump charge.
Okay.
Now, the, the other question that came to me, since we're using a swipe card, if we ever got to over thirty thousand gallons in a day, is that card reader able to automatically lock somebody out?
At this time, that system is not set, equipped like that. You know, I'd have to work with, uh, the vendor at this time, his, uh, that's JWC Environmental, to see if that would be a possibility, if we can get that part of, of the system automated. Yes, sir.
I'm just, you know, concerned about, you get your thirty thousand gallons in during the regular business hours and all, if somebody has an emergency and they want to come in dump that night?
We have, we do have the capability of printing out for the day, the, the exact volume. Uh, we do have a, a mag meter on, on site, uh, that would, would be able to print off that information.
Okay. So I have a spare.
Any other comments before we go to the public for a few comments?
I'll hold my comments till after the public.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, uh, anyone want to speak under this item? Any comments between, sir?
Uh, you know, uh-
Uh, go ahead and come up here, sir, because you're, uh, we have the television on, so. Welcome to our meeting, sir. And just state your name for the record, just.
I'm Brian Superlock.
Good. Welcome to our meeting.
Um, on your fence proposal, I was thinking, you know, over the course of, you know, years, you know, what, would that add up to be having the automatic fence? Because, you know, it seems like pulling resources from the town to open that seven days a week, and on the weekends, a big putting yourself out there. You know, like as a businessperson, I personally wouldn't want to be somewhere every single day either, you know? And then, uh, you know, not pointing, saying names or pointing fingers, but, you know, have observed people as of recently dump, dumping pretty heavy loads too, you know, and, you know, not saying anything, but it looks like it's in a desperate need of finding more business. And, you know, I, by my account, I seen fifteen to twenty thousand gallons of sludge go into that plant easily. And, you know, with the truck of that size, I don't see a load being that heavy, or should be in that heavy. Because it wouldn't fit in a place to get that kind of sludge anyways. I'm, I'm guessing there's sludge getting hauled from a, another point in New Mexico and even being hauled up here to try to make a point.
Sure.
So, that's, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pedalta?
In that regard, going back to the logs, do your logs show that material's coming from outside the county? And this was brought up last week, Tubman, and I just, or last meeting.
Based off the manifests and, uh, you are looking at, uh, an honor system, Council, Councilman Pedalta, no, we do not see anything coming out of the, uh, out of the county. Uh, basi- basically, what I've been seeing is pretty much everything right in this area. Um, I think they, they're able to dump and quest up, although it's still in, in, uh, the county, and of course, Red River and Angel Fire, they have their, uh, stations over there as well. So if somebody is, is doing that, uh, they are actually kind of, kind of hindering themselves bringing up loads from, from out of county. But, uh, we are working on the honor system in terms of, uh, of that information, sir.
So according to this, then the maximum load that can be dumped is five thousand gallons?
No, it'd be approximately ten thousand gallons per vendor, maximum, for the day, thirty thousand.
All right, I understand that, but in one, i- is there a maximum that you can haul, that you can dump per load?
Actually, to answer that, Councilman Pedalta, um, SNR septic is probably the only truck that has a, uh, tank that is about five thousand gallons. Uh, raised septic is right around thirty-six, and everybody else is between twenty-five hundred and fifteen hundred gallons.
And then you, and, but you metered the haul, so you know exactly how much came out of each load?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, anyone else want to speak under this item? Uh, ma'am? Welcome to our meeting, and just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Judy Cantu, and I swear to tell the truth.
Welcome to our meeting.
I've been an environmentalist since I was in fifth grade. It's pretty much my passion. And this resolution just doesn't make any sense at this point to pass it because there's no enforcement there. And, um, the purpose on your resolution, I'm going to read it. "The Town of Taos Septage Receiving Station has been constructed for the pers- perp- excuse me, per- purpose of providing an environmental safe and economical disposal site for the discharge of domestic and small commercial septic waste." I've been out there. I've been watching, and it's a grave concern for me because it's an open area that's not gated. And the resolution itself, in the non-acceptable waste, there's nobody monitoring that. There's nobody there to pH test it, which just sort of makes this worthless. And, uh, it says they will be accompanied to the septage, septic, oh, sorry, glasses and, no glasses are bad. Uh, they'll be, uh, accompanied to the septic receiving site for unloading. I haven't seen anybody there in the time that I've gone to watch. And the six months' worth of manifests, well, I was one of the persons who requested that. And I, I have a few copies here. There's nothing on them, so are these freebies? It's like lost revenue. And with the revenue that you could get on this, you could hire somebody that will monitor it, somebody who will go pH balance. You know, if there's mixed loads, who's to know where they're going to be coming from? And it's, uh, it's real concerning for me. This is the source for the Rio Grande up here in northern New Mexico, and we don't want to be the source polluting it clear down to Texas and Mexico. And I think it's really something that needs to be addressed before you pass this resolution. And it's a big issue these days. There's, the honor system is great and wonderful, but you can't go to the bank to get a loan on your word. These guys, if, uh, they're honest about it, which I hope they are, that's great and wonderful, but all it takes is one accident, and in these days and times, there's a lot of first-time accidents. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Ms. Cantu, um, when you say you suggest that we should not pass this resolution, are you, um, are you recommending to, um, to not allow these waste haulers to dump here? Or what are you suggesting?
No, there just needs to be something else in place. They need to be monitored, it needs to be in a fenced area. Um, it's really important for the Rio Grande, it's, it's crucial, and, um-
What are your recommendations?
Putting it behind a fence and not being able to have blank forms that show no gallons, no volumes. You know, I, I wonder, were these freebies? Because there was a lot of them in the whole stack of six months, uh, throughout the, the pile of paperwork. And, uh, water is life, and I just feel like if things already, there's two other resolutions passed, one during Mr. Pedalta's and, uh, this other one that was during Bobby Duran's mayorship. And it's pretty much the same thing, uh, you know, about being accompanied and being pH tested, but that's not happening. That's my next request. I want to see the tests of any pH tests that have actually been done.
I, I believe that's the reason why we're here today is because we're trying to improve that system.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to address your concerns.
Yeah. Until they're actually in place, though, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, they can't be in place till we pass the resolution, though. And so, I mean, I think you heard before that prior to the utilization of that facility, uh, septic hauling, uh, was being disposed in non-acceptable areas such as Arroyos and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I heard that.
So as an environmentalist, I think you should, uh, probably appreciate the fact that the town has a facility where these haulers can go ahead and, uh, haul this waste that is produced by our constituency. Not everybody has a, uh, sewer line provided by the Town of Taos, uh, or other, uh, municipalities or associations such as El Prado de Pueblo or El Valle de las Rancho's. So in that case, you have to have a septic. And you have to have it pumped, because if not, then what you're going to be doing is contaminating your backyard-
Right.
-with overflowing, okay? So I think what we're doing here is the right thing, is, is we, um, have a resolution that is going to clean up the procedures and policies and make sure that we, uh, um, take care of the Rio Grande. Uh, that's the, that's the function of the plant, is to make sure that they treat this, this, uh, this, uh, waste, so then it can be discharged down, down the river, basically. I mean, in some cases, uh, in, in municipalities, they take and take and ship this, this waste, this water, after it's gone through the, the treatment plant, into water, uh, clarification plants, and then reuse it for, for, guess what, drinking.
Oh, yeah.
So, so it's, it's, I, I think that we're, we're headed in the right direction. Nothing's perfect, and I think if there's some, um, some charges or some, uh, loads that weren't paid for, I think that's what we're trying to do here, is capture those costs so we can hold, uh, these haulers accountable. And I think there's a camera system down there that is not operable, and I think it needs to be up and running so we can, uh, you know, you can only allow people to use the honor system so much. And, uh, I think what we need to do here at the town is, is hold them accountable by way of that camera, uh, this swipe card system. If it needs improvement, we need to improve it. If we need to gate that area, we need to gate it. The fa- the fact of the matter is we need to provide a service, and that's what we're doing, as well as, I believe, um, keeping our environment, uh, in, conscious of our environment and trying to do the right thing. So I appreciate your comments, but I think we're, that's what we're here for today.
Yeah, well, ten million dollars to renovate it and the camera doesn't work doesn't make any sense, and I just, anyway, I really appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else like to speak under this item?
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, I pre- I appreciate your allowing me to be here. I'm going to move my mic a little closer because I'll be darned if I can hear what people are saying up here, you, you as well as, uh, people speaking here. Last time I was here, two weeks ago, and, uh, we more or less passed the resolution on to, to, till tonight to be reconsidered, and I read you a list, and I won't do the same thing again, of all my concerns with the wastewater treatment plant operations and whether there were compliance issues or violations or things of that nature. I'm only going to read you one of those that I read last time. "Does the wastewater treatment plant operator activity monitor, record, and otherwise control site access or ingress by pumpers or others during off-hour times and periods when WWTP personnel are not present?" And I still would like to get an answer to that question from either, preferably from the operator himself. And the reason I asked that one question is I'm passing around a series of three photographs, and the third photograph, which is a picture of the garage door at the receiving building, showing a leak coming from inside the building and flowing outside the building. And if that does not constitute a spill or some sort of violation of operating procedures, I would like someone to explain that to me. That photograph was given to me, and, uh, I can refer you to someone else who can give you a lot more detail on that third picture. And, uh, and at the time that instance occurred, there was no one on duty, and it was during operating hours. And if you'll recall, I was, uh, kind of quieted down last meeting when I was here because I was getting ready to ask the same question, and, uh, did not get an opportunity to do that, to get it answered. And I would like to pursue an answer to that question tonight.
What was your, what was your question again?
I cannot hear you.
What was your question again?
Well, I just read this question. "Does the wastewater treatment plant operator actively monitor, record, otherwise control site access or ingress by pumpers or others during off-hour times and periods when wastewater treatment plant personnel are not present?" I'm presuming if they're not present, they're not on duty. And, but that picture that I passed around was during normal operating hours, and there was not a wastewater treatment plant person there observing the dumping of, that was going on at that time. I just want to bring that to your attention.
And, and just so that you know, I mean, we didn't, we never quiet anybody down, it's just sometimes we have to move on to the next agenda item, and we spent a lot of time on this issue in the last time.
I know. Well, I didn't say that you quieted me down.
Yeah, we gave ample time for a lot of dialogue at the last meeting, so, uh, Mr. Martinez, if you can answer that question, uh, real quick, um-
And he, uh, he does have a copy of that photograph, the third photograph, so.
That one photograph? I just have one picture of one.
Yeah, right.
Uh, on that one, uh, Mr. Mayor, that picture of, of water coming out of that garage door, we did have a wastewater, um, uh, it's not, the non-podable, the recirculation from the effluent, and that water- It's not the non-podable, the recirculation from the effluent, and that water is being used to wash the screens. And unfortunately, at that time, it broke on us. We did have some of that water that seeped out of the garage door. We fixed it and minimized the leak.
And is that the question that he answered, that he asked earlier?
For the picture. And as for, unfortunately, I can't answer the time where he's referring to in terms of the staff wasn't there. If the gate was there, we were in operation, that means we were there. We just have other requirements that require our things.
But I do want to make real clear. It is a rhetorical question you're asking here because you're asking about the operations currently, and what's being proposed here is to change those operations. So, currently, there is not a requirement that a staff person supervise. We can't enforce that. We can't just come up with those rules ourselves.
Well, it was my understanding.
We have to come to this body, we have to come to this body for them to set the rules so that now they can't dump but with a staff supervising the operations. And so, I think that's pretty clear to you, right? I mean, right, if you ask questions about how it is right now, well, that's an interesting conversation. But what we're proposing here is to change the conversation.
That is clear to me. But what I want to point out is the devil is in the details. That was taking place during hours of operation. And was there someone on duty when that break in the line or whatever for your filter washing occurred? Because it was my understanding that there was no one on duty at the building at that time that leak occurred.
It's a big facility, Mr. Mayor and council. So, no, we probably weren't there at the headworks, monitoring the headworks.
So, during normal operation hours, there was, it was no one on duty?
At that building.
At that building, right.
We were probably desludging the membranes or...
And I believe the, in the resolution, it says that someone will, when a load is brought, they will be met and accompanied to the building.
Right.
And that seems to me like that did not occur.
Well, that does not occur now. Of course it doesn't.
Yeah, that was before. We're changing the rules so that we can address specifically those concerns that you have.
Well, I, it begs the issue of whether similar violations have not occurred in the past, and we've been told that no violations have ever occurred at the plant, just as a reminder to you, so.
Not accompanying a hauler is not necessarily a violation with the environmental. That's what we're looking at. Now, if moving forward, we make a policy and nobody accompanies, then there would be a violation of our policy. But I think what we're referring to is no violations have been made at the plant that would result in a citation from the state.
Okay.
So, I think that's what we're talking about.
Okay, we've discussed my question enough, so.
May I ask a question real quick? With regards to some of the photos that the gentleman just passed out, one shows the pump discharge receiver, and then it shows a picture of the building itself. And Councilmember Peralta just brought up an interesting aspect with regards to the facility that sits directly behind the recycling center where the townyard is, in that the pump discharge receiver that was located there has a concrete, basically slab or floor, whereas this is just dirt. So, what happens in the event that, you know, a hose ruptures or, you know, something malfunctions? That's going directly right into the...
It's in concrete.
That's in concrete?
Around.
Anthony, go ahead and explain.
Basically, everything around the dumping valve and all that is asphalt. Don't, I really don't, I can't see the picture.
The discharge valve is contained within a concrete.
It's within the concrete.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm talking about here is that if you were to have a breakage, somebody's hose splits, and you have a leak, 500 gallons of sludge, you have no way to contain it. It's off onto the pavement and off into the dirt. And that's what I'm saying is that I think that we should have a containment area there, back your truck onto, if there's a breakage, you have some way to catch it. And we don't have then discharge into the environment.
Actually, Councilman Peralta, that is, if it's coming from the truck, that is the truck's, truck hauler's responsibility.
I understand that. Accidents will happen.
But what I mean is they're responsible for recovering and disinfecting the air because it is on their truck.
I understand that, but if I look at this picture, and if it's fairly close to the topography, all the water or effluent or anything that's there is going to drain away from the building and drain away from the discharge receiver. And what I'm trying to say is that we need to have some way to contain that so it doesn't go that way, that we can capture that and keep it clean. That's all I'm saying. And that's just something for futures.
Mr. Mayor, I wholeheartedly agree. I think that the town needs to do something with that area and pour a concrete slab that would actually drain into this little basin where the valve sits and as a precautionary measure. And I think that's not the hauler's responsibility. I think that falls on us.
Are we talking about a spill containment system?
Well, with regards to, I would think it would something mimic like a semi-unloading dock, you know, where back down the ramp, it's encased in concrete so that if there is a spill, there's at least additional drainage for it to go back down or a way to be contained so it doesn't get back into the outside environment.
Catchment system.
Good point.
Mr. Mayor, thank you and the council for listening to me.
Thank you.
Oscar, I would definitely look into what it would take internally with our Public Works Department to make a catchment system.
It also allows them to wash off whatever they have there and don't let it drip all the way out to the road or wherever, back to the city.
Okay. Anyone else, gentlemen? Please state your name for the record and welcome to our meeting.
Dennis Fernandez. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, do you mind if I see the pictures that were presented?
Sure.
Okay, just briefly, just a quick comment on this containment. Pretty much when we pull up the dump, we're standing by the truck, we're standing by the valve. In the event that the hose breaks, we're there to shut the valve right away. City of Red River actually has a really good system. You've got to completely back into a containment, the whole truck goes into a containment, you open the valve, boom, you're done. It actually works pretty good.
I yet haven't had a problem with this. Pretty much the only problem that does come up occasionally is that, you know, the valve underneath the receiver station, it gets grit, it gets, you know, gravel and rocks in there, we can't drain the rest of the truck. And that sometimes is a problem. During the winter months, it's really a problem because it freezes. Other than that, I don't really see too much of an issue. I know that OMI has a risk management plan, and they have a SWIP that they actually have in place. So, I'm really not here to criticize what OMI does because I feel that they do a great job running that facility, no permit violations. They're running a state-of-the-art facility, and it is handling the loads that we bring in. Basically, my concerns, my concerns with everything is being able to provide a service to the community. And, you know, as we all know, over the weekend, you know, the phones went out, people freak out. It's like, what are we going to do now? Phones aren't working. 911 is, you know, could have been a problem. With the help of Red River, that was overcome. But, you know, what happens, you know, late afternoon, late evening, when we've got to go to somebody's house, somebody has, you know, a septic running down their yard, there's kids playing in it, there's dogs that are rolling around in it, it's a health hazard, it's a health concern. And, you know, and again, our biggest thing is to provide a reasonable service for our We actually had a couple meetings regarding the times and the amount of gallons that we could bring to the facility. With the wastewater plant being a regional facility, when we think regional, I think what it ended up being was the enchanted circle, which was Eagles Ness, Red River, Angel Fire and all that. And of course, when I go out there, and I can only speak for myself, when I go to Red River, I dump in Red River. When I go to Angel Fire, I dump there. But on rare occasions, when that facility is closed, of course, we've got to bring it here. With the time constraints, it makes it a little difficult to try and make the four o'clock cutoff. It makes it really hard. At our meeting, we discussed that we would, we would look at, within six months, that we would look at adjusting the times, adjusting the flow. We'd set some parameters and record some data, specific data, so that we could, we could change that. I feel that during the winter months, that's like the most crucial time for us to do any type of business. Shutting everything down about 2:30, 2:45 makes it tough, makes it really tough. We have such a small window during the winter hours, somewhere between 1:00 and 3:00 where we can actually dump. It's so hard to get the truck started in the morning. I guess, I guess the fact that we can relook at this and within six months, I guess is something that, I guess we'll have to look at down the road. Do you got anything, Ray, real quick while I look at this?
Yeah, I had a comment about the pH. The plant does give us a volume and pH within the system. So, it doesn't, if the system's working, we're getting that kind of reading on every load. If you're not within, I believe it's five and nine, it'll shut you down and it'll stop the machine and throw a buzzard, and you won't be able to dump in there. So, we are getting pH balanced or tested automatically.
Yeah, one other thing is that all the septic haulers were required by the Environment Department as part of the regulations that we all get certified. And it was supposed to be done by, what was it, January? Whatever it was. So, we all went, we all got certified. And in that training, we talked about what a hot load is. And a hot load is when you pop a tank open, and if you see that it's red, that pretty much tells you that it's a meth lab. And obviously, we can all identify grease. So, basically, during our certification, you know, we were advised that, you know, if you come across something like that, just shut the lid, call the authorities, and move on. We know what's going to affect that plant, what is and what isn't. We're here to make sure that plant can continue to function because our livelihood depends on it. So, we wouldn't do anything to pollute it. Back to what Ray was saying, as far as when we do the swipe card, when that valve opens, it allows us to go ahead and dump. When we're done and we turn the machine off, it actually prints out a small receipt that has your transaction number, the time, the gallons.
Well, we would read the pH and put the pH when it was working.
Exactly. When it was working, we'd record the pH under. But the system has always just been a monitored simple, a system. It's never required to have it manned, never. I mean, the guys do a great job by, you know, providing us a bucket so that we can go ahead and clean up the area. And as far as, as far as the cleanup, the water that is provided there is reuse water. It's water that can be reused, and it goes right back down inside the system. I don't know if a lot of people know this, but, you know, the golf course uses the water. You know, they use 750,000 gallons a day, that's their allotment. At one point, we were making fertilizer, and that plant was almost a full functioning, almost like a human. I mean, it was working, it was complete 100% reuse. And of course, now it's going to Red, I mean, to Rio Rancho to dispose of the sludge. But, you know, at one point, it functioned very well, and it was full use. If council has any questions for me, I'd be willing to answer them.
Councilmember Gonzalez, we know we need to move on to the next.
I do have two just real quick questions. Number one, with regards to the hours, and you're saying that small window of time, what would best suit your needs with regards to winter hours?
Well, we've been living with 24/7. That's what we've had. And when you get accustomed to something and, you know, it gets changed or something, well, we kind of panic because we, then we have to kind of adjust our schedules, we have to, you know, let the public know. We've got to let the Environment Department know because I do a lot of septic inspections that are governed by the Environment Department that they schedule. So, now, I've got to tell them, hey, you know what? If we don't do it in the morning, we can't do it. And this is part of business. And, you know, and I just, I mean, just my personal opinion, I think four o'clock is just too short. I mean, I think a longer day, a longer day would be nice.
So, with regards to winter hours, and you're seeing harder starts in the morning, I face the same thing with our, you know, delivery vehicles. Would it make more sense to open the facility at 11:00 and run it till 7:00 or 8:00? As opposed to having it open that early in the morning? Well, and I'm talking winter hours.
Winter hours, yeah. And I think the reason the staff wanted it at 8:00 because that's when somebody is there, and they can open the gate. And now that we're going to have a gate out there that, you know, has to be manually opened and locked, I think that's why the staff wanted to propose that time. We had talked about putting in a security gate that would probably have some type of remote control, or like the city of Albuquerque, it's a module that goes on your windshield, and when it recognizes you coming, it opens a gate, allows you to come in, shuts the gate, and then when you're leaving, it opens the gate to exit, which actually works pretty good. And then the other thing is that you do have the swipe card that would, that would essentially recognize that you're there on top of the gate, plus you've got a camera. So, we've got three items that identify the person that's there. But as far as hours of operation, and any additional time that we can get to provide a service to our community, I think would be of huge value.
And, Mr. Mayor, and one of the reasons I ask that question is because if we're operating off a key swipe or, like you're saying, the module, all of those systems, because we use them within our own organization with regards to, you know, multifamily housing, it creates audit trails with everything. Each individual key module is unique to that individual in the sense that you can't hand that remote off to somebody else because it's internally installed within, you know, the vehicle itself.
Exactly.
So, I guess for me, it's saying, well, if we have the audit trail, we have the audit system that would, you know, key something back to you being there, you're the last individual that was in there. It kind of leaves the responsibility up to you to make sure when you left that facility, it was, or the circumstances come back to you. And I'm not saying, you know, I don't know that we warrant a 24-hour access, you know, because I think that's a little overboard. But at the same point, I think, you know, decent hours of operation for you guys to conduct your daily business is well within the means. And I get the understanding of picking up a load at 3:00 PM and, you know, even with us now closing at 4:00, and you don't have time to make it to the facility. You know, you don't want that sitting in your truck, and at the same time, you don't want to turn away business.
That's true.
So, you know, I can, I can hear the arguments, and I see the arguments. The other question I have is how long has that pH reader been out? And why?
It actually works. It's turned on. But that might be a question for Anthony to answer. And I think the last time I asked him, which is a couple of days ago, he said that they were, they were cleaning it, and they were calibrating it on a daily basis. Anthony?
Councilman Gonzalez, what happened was during our normal calibration and monitoring of the system, when it's go-calibrated, it failed. It is an eight-year pH meter, same thing with the flow meter. You know, it is in a very toxic environment, and it just failed. You know, it is eight years old.
What do those things run?
The pH meter is roughly $1,200. But I have our new flow meter, and that one's going to be $3,100.
So, Mr. Mayor, we run a $10.4 million organization, and we can't have a couple of extra of the most, probably one of the most vital components to this, you know, to this enterprise on hand so we're not, you know, waiting in the interim. I would ask, you know, and this is something that was brought up with regards to even that, you know, the way we catch and monitor stuff, you know, with regards to the spill containment area, you know, are we facing this in the way of doing it very cheaply? And that's my concern, is, you know, I want every single safeguard in place with regards to stuff like this and not wait for the what-if. You know, because if the what-if comes, then we're all going to be scrambling. And so, I mean, these are minor tweaks, you know, that can save us all a lot of headaches. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know where we can, you know, find allocation within, you know, budget-wise to do... you know, budget-wise to do something like the, the, the full concrete containment, but I mean, I, I do feel that, you know, having it just out the way it is.
Now, uh, maintaining those meters is part of OMI's obligation. Keeping inventory there in place is also a part of the obligation. I will have a conversation with them. Um, the construction of that containment, um, uh, system, let's call it an apron, um, is, is a more substantial capital allocation, um, cost, uh, and it's not anything we would need to go to the general fund and, you know, eat down our, uh, our, uh, reserve days. It would be something that we would, uh, look for, uh, look to in the utility fund. And, uh, we'll just, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll make that priority, we'll start designing that and, uh...
Like I said, I think these are minor tweaks, you know, that, you know, even just from within that will save us a lot of, and make us more efficient at the same time. So back to the gate access, if we can look into that as well, I mean, to spend, you know, three thousand dollars on a, on a gate access control that controls ingress and egress at the same time of keeping an audit trail as to who was there, where they have to, even if you guys physically have to get down and, and, and touch a proximity reader to it so that it physically knows that somebody was there, you know?
Sure. Uh, we'll get causticism on that, but, but of course, the, the access to the facility to dump actually is controlled by that card. The reason we're even going to fences is because we heard testimony last week is that there could be terrorists who could come in and, uh, attack us from those points. And that's why we're putting in these, uh, these, uh, these, these gates, these fences. And, uh, what you've heard today is that we, we've had, just there's been none of that up until now and we're putting up the fences, um, 'cause that's what we were directed, but uh, that, that is an extra precaution here that, um, we're glad to do, but at this point, these guys haven't behaved in a way that, uh, makes us believe it. We need to start fencing them in and out.
I could guarantee that if a terrorist is going to do something, they're not gonna go to the treatment plan, they're gonna go to somebody's private home and just do it there, so.
Well, same regards, twenty-one thousand gross vehicle, weight rating vehicle and a chain link fence.
So, so if we can, uh, start winding down comments because, uh, it's getting late at night, so, uh, councilmembers, I'll go first and then we'll go to councilmember Abita.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was just gonna call, make the same comment I always was concerned about. Excuse me, guys, wait.
If you could say, there may have some...
I, I was just gonna say that, um, I was always concerned about our water system. I never had any idea that terrorists would attack our sewage plant, but anyway. Um, I got a question and this may be for maybe Anthony or, or combined. If, um, if we're capping our, our waste hauling per day for thirty thousand gallons, but we're narrowing our window that where we can dump, uh, or discharge that waste into that plant, wouldn't that potentially, uh, be a greater chance of shocking our plant? And so I, I think that for, for that reason, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea, uh, to expand those hours. Not only does that give you the ability to be able to, to, to discharge, especially in the wintertime, but it also gives you the ability to be able to service our constituents. That's what it's really all about. So with that, um, I am concerned and have my concerns with the, uh, the four o'clock cutoff date, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Abita?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Uh, would all the septic haulers in the audience, please raise your hand? And I see four of you. Do all of you haul a hundred percent of your waste to the Taos Regional Surplight? Raise your hand.
For the most...
Yeah. Mr. Rayal, where do you haul yours to?
Uh, that's a private, uh, answer.
So you don't, so you don't, so the answer is?
I would like to speak, give me my turn, I know where you're going with this.
Go to the mic.
Uh, but I would like to just wait for them and then I would like...
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing you say is that you don't haul a hundred percent of your sludge to the wastewater treatment plant. So that's a different point and yes, you don't have to answer that question if you don't desire. Um, it sounds to me like the solution's easy. It was a twenty-four hour operation on the honor system. We do need procedures, we do need policies to enforce. Let's take it from what it was to seven AM to seven PM. The technology's out there to put on that gate to make everybody accountable. I, as a realtor, have a lockbox on the house, there's a computer in it. If I swipe in, it tells people when I went there, when I left, and it does that with a hundred and eighty realtors. So with four septic haulers, I guarantee you, there's very simple technology to control the access. We'll go seven to seven, seven days a week. Uh, we'll see how it works and we'll continue to tweak it.
Okay. Uh, any other comments, questions? Uh, I, I just wanna ask the haulers, uh, and you two that are here, um, since you're already at the, uh, table there. How does this affect, anytime you implement rules and procedures or policies, if you will, I always look at, how does it affect the consumer? I do have a concern with the four o'clock, especially in winter, because sometimes time is of the essence and if, uh, if their sewer lines or septic lines are within the freezing area and there's backup, you can't do, lay there overnight and now you, then you have a thousands and thousands and tens of thousands of dollars of problems that you have because it froze your sewer lines. So that's one issue there, but as far as your, the fees that we're charging now versus what was, how does, is, how is it gonna affect? The last thing we want, you know, is our consumers to avoid wanting to empty their septic tanks regularly.
Exactly.
Uh, and we don't want them to say, well, they've raised the fees and now it's gonna burden us. So how does, 'cause we're, we just spent ten million dollars to improve the wastewater treatment facility, to make it better. And at the end of the day, taxpayers are paying it. So how did it better to the consumer rather than, well, they spent all this money and now they're charging this much more? So how does it affect the consumer?
Um, Mr. Mayor, let me just go back in time a little bit. Um, back around nineteen ninety-nine, um, by the direction of, uh, uh, former mayor Peralta and Gus Corva, uh, they asked me to go to Salt Lake and, um, look at some, uh, septic receivable stations. And, uh, me and the, the former utility director, uh, Patrick Behill, we went down there and we identified one that we felt would be, um, in probably the town's best interest. So we went down there with the engineer and lo and behold, this is the system that we got put in. In the meantime, we had a, a small receivable station that sat right inside the fertilizer plant and, and Gus says, well, why don't we open it up to everybody? Let's, let's get people to start coming, we'll charge five dollars a load, let's just get them coming, let's get business generated. And then when we have our facility open, we can develop some, some plans and, and some, uh, some guidelines. So, uh, obviously, I left OMI and, um, the, the system was constructed. Uh, we had set some, um, some, some, uh, flows in place. I, it was something like from X amount of gallons to eight hundred would be twenty and from eight hundred to seventeen hundred was thirty. From seventeen hundred on up, it went to forty and it's just sort of escalated. And, uh, that was just kinda put together based on what somebody else did. It really wasn't something that we studied and looked at 'cause it was new to us, it was new, we didn't have a facility like this before. Um, and now that, um, you know, after the several meetings that we've had, um, one of the discussions was that, um, the fees would go up a little bit, uh, to offset the cost of a security gate so that we can get in and get out. So we're going from zero gallons of two thousand for forty dollars, an extra five dollars for the cost of the security gate, uh, to help offset the cost. 'Cause I mean, we, we wanna do what's, you know, of course, best for, for the facility, but, uh, we don't have a choice other than to pass that cost on to the consumer. So that, that's kinda...
So you're saying it's a five dollar increase that we're...
Well, actually, if you bring less than seventeen hundred gallons as of today, it's only thirty. So it, what's being proposed now is up to two thousand would be forty, well, actually it'll end up being forty-five.
Yeah, okay, so you're looking at about a fifteen, twenty dollar...
Yeah.
And a flat rate too. Well, yeah, that's what it is too.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, um, that's all. I have any other comments, questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, okay, uh, I think there was a comment still that, that they, uh, you said you wanted to speak? Okay.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Just state your name for the record, um, Mr. Rayal.
Steve Rayal.
Okay, that's it.
Um, it's real interesting to see how political it can get when I'm being asked a question from the audience, I'm a, a council man. The thing that I want to address, and I really like how Mr. Peralta's thinking, I, of everybody that I'm seeing here, I really see that he has a focus on, on the right, making the right decisions. We operate, the town of Taos operates through rules and regulations. And to tell me that you can give a septic hauler access after, after government hours into government property, that would be a violation. You can't do that. Homeland Security or even, uh, OSHA or anybody to see that type of operation, supposedly something would happen. Where in the authority do you have to give anybody after hours? You're a government. How would it look like for them to give it keys to your office there, Mr. Cordova? After hours? It's ridiculous, you can't do that. I would like to see where in there you have that authority to be able to give access to any departments in the town of Taos after five. When you give them a swipe card, you're allowing them to enter government property. And you better think about that real careful when you do that, 'cause that's a violation.
A violation of what?
Of the rules and regulations that the government, the town of Taos follows. You open from eight to what? Five? So now you're wanting to give access from seven to seven to a private septic hauler? How, how, how does that happen? Anyway, uh, we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant. There's a lot of problems with the receiving station. It's not being mentioned, it's, it's making, everything's all right, there's no violations. That way it's coming out of the garage doors is a violation. EPA, Homeland Security would see anything like that, that would be a major fine. Why, why, why would? I, I really think that a person should be there, if you're gonna open from seven to seven like you're suggesting, you should have somebody there taking care of the plant seven to seven. To allow somebody, if there would have been somebody, oh, I'm the person, that my son was there and luckily, on a Saturday, all the phones went down. But he was able to make that call and he says, I'm trying to get ahold of somebody in wastewater treatment plant, but the phones are down. I said, keep on trying, keep on trying. I said, take a picture so we can show him what is happening there. To think, because you haven't had a violation, you're never gonna have a violation, so you should continue, uh, operating a loose operation? Let me talk a little bit about the camera. Uh, maybe I can even ask, uh, Francisco or, or Anthony of, of these questions because it really concerns me. I, what I see here is we see a, a board of council members, but I don't see any environmental concern in con, I don't hear anybody saying, let's protect the wastewater treatment plant. And, and council members, that is your job, to protect the wastewater treatment plant. To allow people right now without a gate, it doesn't have to go through a resolution to protect the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant without a camera working, I would like to ask Anthony, or somebody that could answer these questions.
Well, please make your comments to us because this isn't a trial here.
Well, they're the ones that are running, I'll ask you, I'll ask you the question then.
Well, this, make your comment, I, I'm opening it up for comment, but this isn't the trial here.
What it is is, the camera hasn't been working for how long? I don't know.
Sure.
I wanna know how long and, and why has there not been an attempt to fix that camera? Two, the, the wastewater treatment plant where it monitors the gallons hasn't been working for two weeks. Did you know that? It hasn't been monitoring for about two weeks? My question is, why isn't there a representative of the plant or an employee standing there to watch and see the manifest and figure how much is in that truckload? So they can determine a cost. My question is, these last two weeks that it hasn't been working, what about the revenue that's lost? How did they, they take records on this? Another thing is the, the station itself, that monitoring thing, I've been there where it doesn't work, they've had to adjust it, work on it, and it has major problems. I've heard on one of the meetings, see, this is all environmental concern, I've not heard anybody talk about it. They're telling me the filters are loaded with grease. They're having to clean, there, I don't hear them say anything about the filters. I heard one of the employees saying that there's a lot of grease they're having to deal with in the plant and they really don't know where it's coming from. That should be a major concern protecting the plant. I was also heard one employee say that there's, at a certain hour, there's a lot of sludge that's coming in at certain hours. But what I'm hearing more is that we need to take care of the plant, we need to have somebody there. Every time somebody backs up to dump, there should be somebody watching, be over that person. I, I'm just curious that the hours were added on Saturday and Sunday, extra four hours for each day. I'm just wondering was, is there overtime paid to the employees? Is there gonna be somebody, uh, there to take care of? Let me just read one, uh, one real quick item here. Well, it was read, when a septic hauler comes in, they should be led to the plant, check their manifest, but there should be somebody there watching what is being dumped. Don't you think that, that's the proper thing? Watch what's being dumped to protect our wastewater treatment plant? I, I, I think that's something that's real important that hasn't been spoken here. We're all speaking the needs that we have. I'm, I'm happy that there's a plant that can, uh, help the septic haulers, that can accommodate the septic haulers. If you wanna go twenty-four seven, hire somebody to take care of the plant twenty-four seven. That, that's, that's what I say, hire somebody to take care of it. And then we're talking about pH. That plant cannot monitor grease, it cannot monitor oil, that's not pH. You can throw fields through in there, a pH is not gonna cover it. So my suggestion is, if you wanna offer twenty-four seven, seven to seven, have somebody there taking care of the plant, the safety of the plant, the safety of the environment, protecting our rivers, our groundwater. It's, we have a concern for the septic haulers and we should have one, but you need to have a concern for the Taos wastewater treatment plant and make sure it's protected. If we, they pay ten million dollars if it, the federal grant or however it came in, that should be more important to you that we really gotta take care of this plant. And again, I'll just repeat myself again, you don't have to wait for a resolution, knowing that the plant was so shot these last two weeks. Where was there anybody to stand and monitor everything that was going on? That plant right now, you give that, you swipe that card, supposedly they get in the gate, they swipe the card, there's a valve, uh, Mr. Peralta, that you can open and dump free, but that needs to be stopped. Somebody needs to be there either to remove that valve, I would say completely get another sign and hire somebody to really overlook the whole situation to take care of the plant. Right now, you can cheat, the cameras aren't working, there's no staff, you don't need a resolution for that. Why would you need a resolution to protect the wastewater treatment plant? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva?
Just a few comments. Uh, Mr. Rayal, um, I really appreciate your, your concerns. Uh, you bring up some valid points and it is unacceptable to have any faulty equipment down there, so, Mr. Manager, if we can, uh, I heard you say that it's OMI's responsibility. Uh, if we could look into... If we could look into that, fix the problems, and that way we do have the safeguards in place. And thank you again for being environmentally conscious. I really appreciate that. Appreciate the fact that you're concerned about that plant that we all use. I do agree with you with those points I just made. As far as the times go, you know, if we were to limit the hours of operation, basically we are not providing service to our community by not being able to haul their waste when they need it hauled, because we have no control as to when that emergency comes up, because then that could be an environmental concern as well. If they have spillage through seepage from their septic systems that find their way into waterways, canals, ditches, arroyos, those are concerns too. So you have to think of, you know, the big picture, and to say that, that the plant should not operate after five or within government hours, I mean, are we to close our water system? Are we to close our roads, our police, our fire? There are certain things that we have to provide, and these are basic necessities. And the availability of that plant to our, all of our constituents is important, not only the ones that have, that are hooked up to that plant via pipes, but the ones who don't have the availability or the access to the community water system, I mean, the source system. So I appreciate your concerns, and I think you were done.
Okay. Let me answer to that.
He's not asking any questions.
Yeah, I just want to answer to what you said.
I'm not asking. I'm ready to make a motion.
Councilmember Silva.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve with amending the resolution as far as the times go, hours of operation from seven to seven, and that's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Under discussion, I just want to make sure that we fix the, reiterate what Councilmember Silva said, fix the cameras. We are firmly within the law to, to have unsupervised or supervised. I think we're going to see, is the intent to have supervised seven to seven, or is there going to be an hours, some hours of unsupervised? And what does that mean?
No, sir. The way the, what we're proposing here tonight is that all dumping be supervised. And so to extend it from seven to seven would mean that we have to have personnel out there, and I have no doubt that we're going to get our, get the bill from OMI. I mean, it's the cost of doing that.
Mr. Mayor, I think with the technology that we have today, and of course, if we have some faulty equipment out there, we have to get it fixed. There's no if, ands, or buts. There should be no excuses about that. But I agree with Councilman Beta, that with the technology we have today, we should be able to provide the service and not have personnel there, but maybe just to go close the gate at the end. But to have them there from five to seven, I think is unnecessary.
Okay. Councilmember Peralta.
Mr. Mayor, along those lines, the question I have is, have we budgeted to have somebody there seven to seven, or five to seven, or four to seven, or eight to four, or whatever?
Well, that's why we were trying to tailor the hours to when we're there, when there's staff there. Obviously, if...
Are we talking about using the current contract staff?
Yes.
They're not doing it now. They don't have time to do it.
Well, the idea here is that, a couple of things. There is not like a constant line of septic trucks backing up into there. They happen occasionally. We think that that, given the hours that are there, we could have covered it with the existing personnel. I'm sure now OMI is making calculations about how much it's going to cost then to have them there, and I trust that I'm going to get that bill pretty soon. And so anyway, that was, that was the intent. That's why we were trying to keep it within those sorts of working hours. But we are recommending to you, though, that all operations take place under the supervision of staff. I mean, that is, that is a significant part of what's being recommended here.
Okay. I would like to, we spent $10 million, over $10 million in that facility, and if we need to amend the contract with OMI to make sure that we're assured that we're going to have some presence there. However, I would like it to explore the opportunity, other communities that have some hours where it's unsupervised, and with some proper protocols in place to ensure with technology, you can have a programmable metering station that will say, "Today, it's not going to accept more than 30,000 gallons," and that's, it cuts off, it just doesn't allow that. There can be a camera system that works, the receipts when it pulls up, and tells you exactly what was discharged, and then a protocol or a process in which staff reviews those hours that those transactions...
Audits.
Audits. So I would like to see that in place, and see what that would entail. But if the motion, and the staff is taking the motion as it's going to be supervised at this point, but I would like to see something come up, because it doesn't make sense that with the technology we have, and I believe that there's other communities that, larger communities that have that, especially with the amount of money that we spent in this facility, I'm sure that there's technologies that can provide for that service, so that at the end of the day, our constituents have the best service that we can have.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, something I mentioned to you when this came up at the last meeting is that dumping at the sewer treatment plant is not the most ideal operation. This is a, this was sort of a make do, you know, the plant was there, they were used to going there, we kind of built the bulwarks there to provide for that. That's, that's not the most ideal place for this to happen. Ideally, would happen much further upstream, so a lot of that stuff comes down the pipes, and so, and that, that action itself provides a lot of treatment. And so, really, the solution here ultimately, I think, for their convenience, even for the environmental impact here of people having to drive that far with these heavy trucks loaded up, the better solution would be that there would be a facility much further upstream. So maybe what we should be looking at here, instead of making, you know, considerable capital improvements over there on a, sort of a temporary situation that's kind of has continued, is for us to look at a more permanent facility further upstream, and maybe we could start an RFP process, to see if we can't get somebody to entrepreneur, to partner with us for that to happen. And truly, Mr. Mayor, that, that will, that would be a much better environment, so we could put the technology there, be closer to be, get policed, there'd be a lot more supervision, et cetera.
Good idea. There's a motion on the floor and a second.
Mr. Mayor, just still under the matters of discussion, and Oscar, now that you bring that up, why do we not utilize the one that's back behind the recycling center? That's further upstream, it's convenient, and other than with regards to smell...
Other than, other than regards to smell, well, precisely because of that. I haven't been here that long. I guess French could tell us better why, why that was closed.
Real briefly.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make it real brief, and it's exactly for that reason, because of the odor, and there was increased heavy traffic on the road that the neighbors started complaining about. They were also complaining about the noise when it was being dumped.
Is that a commercial zone? It is C2, right? It's industrial, so, you know, for...
It's M1.
M1, so it's, yeah, so it's even further beyond that. We're in the M1 zone.
Right. It was at the Public Works Yard, about 150 feet away from the CAB, so.
I think we need to explore that option.
We need to explore that option, Mr. Manager.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we explore that option, then we could staff it with town personnel, and not have to amend the OMI contract and say, "Fine."
Okay.
All right. Hi, Frank. You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions?
Call for a question.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion here. Thank you all for coming here to testify. Appreciate it. Next, we will go to item B, discussion of joint powers agreement between Towne and Taos, Taos County, Village de Cuesta, Village of Taos, Key Valley, for consolidated dispatch services.
Well, Mr. Mayor, where do I begin with this? It's a, it's sort of a never-ending quest. We have for you a brief presentation about where we are with our talks with the county. It's good to see our Assistant County Manager here. Perhaps if you have questions, and he's agreeable, we could defer some questions to him if he's got the authority to answer them for the county. We have, as you know, been in talks with the county now about a month to try and fashion a joint powers agreement that we could put in front of all of the governing bodies, the four governing bodies that are parties to this agreement. We were guided by a memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding, an MOU, that the county and, the county commission and the town council approved jointly. And so we think that, at this point where it stands, is that we think that all of the points of the memorandum of understanding are now in the, are now, have now been put in to the joint powers agreement satisfactorily, I think, to all parties, but there are, there are still some outstanding points where there is currently an impasse. And I won't go too much into them, because, well, I would just be duplicating what I'm going to ask our town attorney to do. But out of these talks, I'll just say that out of these talks right now, it does seem that we are at such an impasse that perhaps going a different way, or going, trying to solve the problems that we're having by a different means has now emerged. And that has to do with where if the county would agree to a formula, if you will, to where the costs for operating 911 is more along the lines of population than call volume, because that in and of itself is, would be hard to, is a little hard to calculate as well. But if it were to go along those lines, then the cost would be more along the lines that, at least from our standpoint, speaking totally from a technical, administrative standpoint, that we would say that really all the other points that we have right now are at an impasse right now with the county. We would be recommending that we genuinely concede those points in exchange for this different way of calculating the cost, which would be very substantial, would bring us very substantial savings. Anyway, as an overview, I just would point out to you that, again, the talks were going a certain direction, guided by the MOU, we are at an impasse. Now, we may be having to take a different tack to finally get to a joint powers agreement that all parties would, would accept. So I wouldn't add anything more to that. If we could just, Mr. James, if we could then walk the council point by point where those impasses are exactly, and where this new direction would take us. Just that.
I don't know. We had the memorandum of understanding. We continue to work on a joint powers agreement. I think it's correct that there's some inherent flaws in the, in the memorandum of understanding that have made it very difficult to complete an agreement based on that memorandum of understanding. We have four attorneys in the room. The good news is, we have the legal counsel from the Key Valley, Cuesta, the county, and myself. So we have all the people that are involved at the table. I'm not sure, the goal is to get an agreement that all legal counsel can recommend to their governing bodies. I'm not confident that we're going to get to that agreement based on the memorandum of understanding. We will be on Friday discussing a different path. I'm not sure it's appropriate to talk about the details of it today, because it's still in progress. We would expect to finish that so that not later than the second meeting in November, and preferably the first meeting in November, we'd have a document that all four legal counsel can recommend to their governing bodies. And at that point in time, we will provide you with, with a lot of detail as to why we're making that recommendation. I guess if there's specific questions, I would try to answer those, although I will do that with the caveat that this is still in flux. We're not, I don't know that it helps a lot to identify the areas of concern relative to the memorandum of understanding today.
I do, we do have our, the county assistant manager here. Is there anything new that we should be considering? I did talk to Steve, and that makes it a little confusing, because I'm not sure who's the point person to talk to, and then the attorneys, of course, are having talks as well. And we hear that the outcome of the meeting, of the last meeting of the attorneys, some percentages were thrown out in exchange for some of the points that we have concern of, namely, we didn't want a weighted voting. We felt that joint powers agreement, our current joint powers agreement that we're operating now leaves one entity in full control, and we wanted to mirror other joint powers agreements that didn't have weighted voting, so to speak, and that was a big concern. And also, there was a provision that pretty much the county wanted to move, and they wanted that provision in there, where some of the other parties, including the Towne and Taos, said, "Well, if there's going to be weighted voting, then a major decision such as that should have a super majority." And the county was not acceptable to that. So it's clear in my mind, and I think some of the county staff has admitted, that that's the intent of the county, is to move. And let's call a spade what spade is. And they're on that path. That's what I've heard. So this council is being asked, based on the conversations that I'm hearing, the updates that I'm hearing, and of course, as our attorney said, that talks are still being in progress, that in exchange for that, the county would then pay a higher portion to have that type of authority to make those kind of a decisions. So do you want, do you have, do you have anything to add to this discussion, or any updates? It gets hard, it gets hard negotiating with the county when we don't know where they stand, and we hear different sides from different commissioners, and, you know, we just want to know where, where we stand and where we're at.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, before we're addressed, I do want to say one thing, that at that joint meeting together that we had at the county, where Councilmember Peralta and myself attended, you know, the one thing that I vowed, and I asked the county elected body to vow also, was that they were doing this in the name of their constituents and in the name of public safety. And the only thing I hear to date is a building and wanting to move. So for me, that shows a big level of backpedal, in that this has nothing to do with constituency. This deals with exactly that, a building. So if it comes down to the 75%, take it. Move it wherever you please. But I think, at the end of the day, as long as you keep them in mind, that's all I care about.
Okay. Rick, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't really sent here to make a statement, but I think that consistent with an email that went to Mr. James, and a conversation that was relayed to yourself by the county manager, that the county has a strong interest in the new approach offered by Mr. James, which I believe is creative, simple, and gets rid of all the other issues.
And this is well outside the MOU, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, and that's what, that's the message I was getting, so we're, so I guess that's what, and can you, just in a nutshell, just so this council member can, I can gauge where the council is going with this, 75%, 25% were the numbers that I heard, which kind of more represents the county population versus the three municipality population. Before, they were basing it on call volume, and that means that we're basing it on who actually uses it or has used it, rather than every citizen that has access to 911. And that's, my belief is that it should be based on population, because every citizen of this county has the right to use 911. So is it true that you believe that administratively, the county, you could recommend a 75-25 with the ability that, A, you have weighted voting? And we, I personally, I was okay with the weighted voting, but we wanted to make sure that they weren't county employees, because we didn't want the employees to feel obligated to vote one way or the other based on political input, if you will. So in exchange for the weighted voting and the ability to possibly move without a super majority, that's what's proposed, and that's what... majority, that's what's proposed and that's what may be looking more favorably at the county, from the county?
Mr. Mayor, it may be that we're asking the wrong person here because Mr. Bellis wasn't even at while I set up negotiations.
I would agree, Mayor, and I was at party meetings.
So let me ask you that question. So let me ask you that question, Brian.
I was there.
Is that, thank you, Rick. So is that what you got out of that meeting, that the county may be favorable on that so that I can see if our council, if we're headed in the right direction?
In a, where we're at right now, and I won't, it's 10:15 at night, so I'm not going to go through the loggerhead issues that we had trouble with. We have almost 100 years of legal experience working on this, which has not helped. It just hasn't. That MOU is really hard to deal with. At any rate, the new proposal incorporates the best stuff from the MOU, the, the transfer of the JPA or the PSAP designation, the equipment would not go to any particular municipality. It would go to the folks of Taos County to end the problem of somehow becoming disqualified for grant funding from the DFA and their local government unit. We expect that this will contain a provision that says nothing about this new JPA will be allowed to deprive any citizen or resident of Taos County from receiving 911 services. We are working hard to protect the existing employees so that they're in essentially a whole harmless position. The economics of it would be, and the finance people have met on this, I don't know, when did you meet Marietta? Very recently, to try to set a baseline number that the 911 service needs to provide the service. And then, once we get to that, the theory is that the county would pick up 75% of that cost and the three municipalities within the county, Questa, the Ski Valley, and the town, would be responsible for dividing the 25% that the county was not paying. That said, that still prices Questa out of the market. So we are, we've bandied about and probably will recommend a, for communities less than 2,000, a flat fee of $10,000 per year, and it'll be escalated by the rate of inflation. So as you work out the numbers, assuming that the finance people thought that the $750,000 area was going to allow us to operate the 911 system, hire an executive director, fund a 1/12 reserve so that we can get this JPA passed, the DFA who needs to approve it, that would be the essential gist of the agreement. And I understand that bears almost no resemblance to the MOU. We tried, we've met for hours relative to trying to reach an agreement on the, on the weighted voting, those sorts of things in the MOU. And it just isn't working. The employees issue isn't working. So those are some problems that we have. Just as one example, providing health insurance for the employees would be acceptable if they were employed by the JPA group, but they're not a large enough group to qualify for health insurance coverage by the state. So that is the sort of snafu that we're running into. So the gist of this is, the county picks up 75%. They have primary control and authority over the operation of the system, and the three municipalities divide the 25% remaining. Expect that the budget would not escalate beyond the cost of inflation, which is why we ask the finance people to become involved so that we had a reasonable starting point.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Brian and maybe Marietta, exactly how much money would 75% entail to the county? And I'm going to take my elected hat off and put my county resident hat on, well, city resident that pays taxes, property taxes to the county. Where will the excess money that they don't have come from?
I don't know. It looks to me like the county budgeted a half million dollars this year for 911 services. So apparently, that's what they have the ability to pay, whatever 75% of $750,000 is would be their share.
Including inflation, based on that rate of inflation?
Well, we'd inflate it after that based on the rate of inflation. Just, Questa and the Ski Valley are very, very concerned that, about a cap because they don't want us to, they don't want the 911 operation to send them a bill for $80,000 that they can't afford to pay. So the original, I mean, going back to day one, one of the offers from the county was that Questa and the Ski Valley not pay anything. Obviously, we had a hard time with that since we don't live in Questa or the Ski Valley. And so that was not acceptable. So we've been working to try to address their financial considerations. And maybe one of the better parts about this is that it does seem to recognize that the town of Taos is actually in Taos County and we pay taxes, and perhaps we should have some benefit from that.
And Brian, I guess that's the reason why I was specifically so adamant against the MOU, because I saw so many areas where it just was not going to be able to, to happen. Plus, during the negotiation, I guess my, I guess I get confused here is during the negotiation, we were told numerous times by the county attorney that this is what was approved and they could not deviate whatsoever from that on any of the negotiations, which that in itself made the negotiations tough. And now we're seeing a complete turnaround on that, and we're not, we don't know, has the county approved this? Or are we negotiating with, is there, is there momentum on this? I know I'm hearing that from, from the assistant manager, but we don't know who we're negotiating with, and we don't know, is there support, the majority of support with the commissioners? Because we've seen certain commissioners say one thing that they support this, and we base our negotiations on that, and then we get shot down. We just don't know. I mean, this is completely, from a budgetary standpoint, really affects the commission's budget. And they balked on the, as a matter of fact, they're refusing to pay the amount that they agreed, the $371,000 for this year, and they lowered that amount. And this is a significant amount. And going into this negotiation, they want it to be capped at 371, and now we see a potential of them paying $560,000 to $600,000. It's concerning, it's confusing. So I just want to make sure that we're on the right track here in the, in these negotiations.
And I think...
Hold on, let me, let me just see if he has any comments on that.
You know, we're not done with this negotiation yet, so I'm not going to comment on about 95% of that.
Okay.
There are lessons learned that we can talk about once this is done. Our goal has been, and the memorandum of understanding provides, that we're looking for an agreement that can be recommended to our respective governing bodies by each of the legal counsel or each of the four entities. I am assured, and I have no reason to disbelieve Mr. Malone when he tells me that the latest incarnation of this, which is a substantial change from the memorandum of understanding, is something that he will recommend to his council, to the commission. And I don't know how they go about divining how they do these things, and I don't care to know. But I'm confident that, that that's the goal he's working for, and I'm confident that if we get to the agreement, that he will make that recommendation to his governing body. Relative to what they will do, you know, I can't say.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, quick question, and I guess this is for assistant county manager. This is hard for me to believe, but I mean, if the county is willing to pay 75% or the equivalent of about $562,000 a year, question I have, Mr. Attorney, is, did we get that in the form of a proposal or in writing anyway, or just the message that we heard Mr. Bellis deliver to us now? Is that all we have at this point?
No, we have, I don't know, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12 hours of face-to-face negotiating.
I know that, but do we have a proposal from the county that, that this is, this is what, this is what we're dealing with now?
No. What we have is a suggestion from the town, listening to what the county has been saying that they want to accomplish. It was a proposal generated from the town, came from my office, and was floated by the Ski Valley, Questa, and the county. Questa and the Ski Valley were immediately receptive to that, and Mr. Malone has had that in his hand for several days. And I don't know how the county reaches their decisions on this, but his, his message to me today was that the county was interested in pursuing that and was willing to undertake a rewrite of the JPA with those provisions in it.
So obviously, so, so we're not done negotiating. You still have to finalize an agreement that would state such, and also in that, I'm sure that there'd be some clauses or provisions in there in case of default or non-payment or, I mean, you're going to be taking care of all that, correct?
Oh, I'm going to take care of the default and payment for the county, just like we're taken care of now.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I guess, you know, there's two ways to look at this as mayor, you know, in my capacity as mayor. I mean, this is a, kind of a really good thing for the town because now we're going to save 200 and some thousand dollars a year. But when I look at it, as councilmember Gonzalez said, as a county resident, this triggers the county then to, to create their own dispatch facility, now spending close to a million dollars now to, or 500,000 to a million dollars of taxpayer dollars for something that's already there, when we need better facilities for our ancianos, we need better facilities for recreational fields. So by virtue of us accepting this, are we now forcing the county? I mean, we spent $200,000 based on studies and facts to move to the command center. And that created a lot of citizens concerned. Now, by this action or potential action or potential negotiation, we're creating taxpayers, which is all of us, we're District One, we're in the county, to foot yet another bill for a possible move, which has been made clear to me that this is going to happen within 12 to 16 months. That's my concern. So it's just, it's not a question, just a, just a comment.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the town of Taos pays 100% of the Youth and Family Center. Until recently, we paid 100% of the library. We started the $10 per year card fee for county residents. Earlier, we discussed that maybe that will go away and we'll once pay 100%. So I have no problem with the county paying 75% of the dispatch center operation and the town paying 25%. But as a good physical store of your taxpayer dollar, I do have a problem with moving the dispatch center, where it was just moved to, to a state-of-the-art facility that was done in collaboration with all the entities. And now they want to go ahead and say, oh, look, we'll pay 75 and you pay 25, give us full control, and we'll take the old planning department building that is a marginal building. We'll spend a couple hundred thousand dollars renovating it. We'll spend another couple hundred thousand dollars moving the equipment that was just installed. And that's a waste of your taxpayer dollars. So I would support the 75-25, Mr. Mayor, but with one caveat, that the dispatch center cannot be moved for a number of years, whatever that number may be, five, seven, 10 years.
Okay. Councilmember Peralta.
Brian, I'm going to ask you a quick question.
All right.
Are we basically taking the current JPA and just flipping it and making it, putting the county where we are? And wasn't that an issue that DFA wouldn't accept, that sort of a JPA?
Well, I think that the issue originally is that the JPA we have now certainly could not, would not get past the, the DFA. I don't think there's any disagreement about that. It's not a flip-flop because the PSAP designation does not belong to anybody, so it's no longer something that, no matter who has it, they could use in any negative way. You have to remember that the primary goal that we started out with was to try to make sure that the taxpayers of Taos County were not deprived of their phone tax money returning here by way of grants because of some chicanery with this PSAP designation or the ownership of the equipment. This agreement removes that, I think, for, either version of this would remove that forever and always, and I think that's a huge step forward. And I think that is something DFA would look favorably on. Now, as it turns out, given the percentages of...
Hold on a minute. But effectively, though, that's not the case. Effectively, by the 100% control over the operation of the command center, effectively the county is going to be the guardian or user of that particular equipment anyway, regardless of who owns it.
That's right.
So it's, effectively, you're still looking at the same flip-flop of the same JPA.
The answer to that is yes, the county has expressed the willingness to pay 75% of the bill in order to be able to do that. Now, since, you know, obviously, I don't represent the county. It looked to me like the town saves the better part of a quarter million dollars a year for them to buy that privilege. And to me, that seemed like a, well, it's a hell of a deal, actually.
Sort of being bought off.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify, that's all I'm trying to do. I'm not saying that for or against it.
I understand that. You're right. I mean, essentially, right now, the town is what's called the fiscal agent. Under this, the existing JPA means that we're unilaterally the shot caller here, and under this new 75-25 split, effectively, that would flip the county into that position, although they will own less with which to threaten the rest of the members than we own right now, with which we could choose to threaten the rest of the members.
So how in the JPA, just to answer that current question that you posed, how would that ownership protect anything? Because we're not really creating an entity to own that equipment. We're just saying it's going to be owned by everybody, but it's really not creating anything when you have the effective operation run by one person.
Well, what it, what it insulates against Councilman Peralta is somebody spending money to set up a rival PSAP that would then cause three PSAPs to be in Taos County, and that is the event that would trigger the loss of the grant funding eligibility for all the people in the county that use phones and pay 50 cents a line into that grant pool.
But there's nothing in the JPA that says nobody can create their own command center.
Well, there will be. I mean, that's the whole point.
I mean, I haven't seen any language that affected if this is signed that no one has the authority to go out and create another one.
Well, the, the language as it's crafted right now is designed to, to prevent a rival, if you will, PSAP. I mean, that is the, the whole motivation to try to make sure that no matter what happens politically, whether it's in this council or the county commission or Questa or the Ski Valley, that no one has the ability to take any action that would cause that PSAP designation to be threatened and cause us to be disqualified from grant eligibility. That was the first goal, to de-politicize the entire system to the, to the extent that the folks in Taos County who pay these taxes could expect, under the rules of the DFA, to see a return of those taxes to the county, not to other counties. And that's the entire point of this new JPA either approach, is to prevent anything from happening that would cause us not to be eligible for grant funding. So that is the difference between the existing JPA, the MOU, and both versions of the JPA that we've been discussing.
I just, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, I just, I mean, you know, the thing is, a JPA can be broken by saying, I'm not going to participate anymore, and I'm going to go my own way because I don't like the way you're doing things. And that's just about, just about what we're having the county say right now, is that they don't like the way we're handling it, so we want to handle it.
Well, we have a dissolution.
And at some point in the future, we could turn around and be the same thing again. The whole purpose of the MOU... The whole purpose of the MOU and trying to come up with a governing body that was not political, that would actually just work for the protection of the 9-1-1 center, seems to have gotten lost all of a sudden. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
There is some extraordinary language about how this gets dissolved, it actually takes a vote to dissolve this JPA. That JPA is going to be around forever in two weeks.
I'm just saying, though, the authority that this council has, or the county commission has, or any other council that's part of the JPA, could by their own volition, create another entity.
Not without violating the JPA, the new proposed one, either of them.
I need to see that language then, because I sure don't see it now.
No. I understand your point, it's critical, and if it's not as dressed as well as it might be, it will be, because, I mean, that's really the fundamental building block of this.
I think that's along the lines of Councilor Peralta there. I see this, we are, by virtue of the old JPA that we're running under now, we see that the problems it causes, and this governing body is saying, look, we want everybody to be equal, we're in control, we don't like that. We're not saying, you know, it has to be weighted to the town's favor, we're saying we want it equal, we're trying to model other areas that has worked. I'm dumbfounded that we would want to go into an area where it could potentially end us right back at the same discussion, where one entity becomes political versus the other one. The town is not asking to be more than, just don't put us as less than, and I guess the county now is saying, well, we'll buy that right, and what does that mean in the future? What does that mean to the taxpayers when it, you know, becomes that? And I believe that if we really and truly want to represent the most crucial service that we offer, 9-1-1, we need to have a very diplomatic joint powers agreement where no one entity is in control of any decision, and the politics is out of it. We're not reinventing this. San Juan has it, they're a model joint powers agreement, Rio Riba has it, and I just, it gets, it's hard to understand that we're headed, possibly heading down that road by virtue of the county's going to pay the town, and what does that mean to the big picture of the operations of 9-1-1? So that's just a comment that I have, and I'm just very concerned, you know, that we're willing to get it to a very diplomatic joint powers agreement, and the county is still adamant of having that control, that we're willing to say, no, you know what, it doesn't work, and it's the most crucial service we provide, 9-1-1.
Mr. Mayor, coming back again to that joint meeting that Councilor Peralta and I attended, the ultimate goal was to say that, on behalf of myself, I would give up all political capital that I had within that JPA, to where, you know, my anticipation was to bring that back to this governing body and say, look, we won't have a stake in the race, and neither will they. The individuals that will have a stake in the race are the first responders, police chief, sheriff's office, fire chief, emergency dispatcher, and one community member at large. Because those are the individuals that deal with this, I'm not an expert in radio communications. I don't know what suits the chief better with regards to how his dispatch operations work, and now we're right back at the same place where one political entity wants complete control. And again, just like Councilmember Peralta said, we've lost sight of what this JPA was intended to be, which was to de-politicize it, and we're right back. So I don't care if they pay seventy-five, twenty-five, or how it goes, my understanding and my care of this JPA was so that this governing body of the makeup of these first responders, whoever oversaw this board, were the individuals that applied for money on their own, became their own fiscal agent, did their own funding, so that neither governing body had political say into an entity that dealt with true health, safety, and welfare of this community, because that's not an area that I think we should be dabbling in. So I want to know where along the conversations that completely got thrown out the window, and it went back to saying, mm, political entity needs to run it, because I don't think even on their side of the fence, anybody has the capability to make the decisions that that dispatch center truly deserves and the people of this community truly deserve.
Well, there is a, within the anticipated JPA, a technical committee that would serve the purpose that you're talking about, and my goal has been to try to get an agreement that all four attorneys could recommend to their governing bodies. I would suggest that the problem with this is that we have a really large entity, the county, and we have a really tiny entity, the, I don't know how many people live in the Ski Valley, but...
Sixty.
Sixty? They don't call 9-1-1 much. So, you know, we have other, Questa has serious financial concerns, certainly we have serious financial concerns. So I guess I would rather you guys wait till you saw the whole cake before you start sticking your fingers in it, and you can always vote no. I just, the goal has been to try to get to something that all four parties could agree to, if it turns out that it's not something that's amenable. We have an existing JPA in place, we have an existing 9-1-1 in place, and we didn't have to go back to the drawing board. Again, the key motivator being to try to insulate the residents from anything that would happen pursuant to a JPA that would cause them to be not eligible for a return of their telephone tax money.
So at this point, it's not ready for approval, then, it's under, it's under discussion? Yeah, okay. Okay. So what is the recommendation of the manager at this point? Does staff have any, have any recommendations?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm recommending to you, just technically, based on numbers, et cetera, that we continue this path, this new solution. It's a very shrewd move by the county, and I'm just dazzled by it, and I'm recommending to you that we continue this path.
Okay. Next, we'll go to the next item. Thank you, Brad.
Done.
Consideration impossible approval of Resolution 1357, a joint resolution of the development of renewable energy in Taos County and north central New Mexico. Councilmembers?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for standing in the audience.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it, and I did get a text earlier from Luis Reyes, and it was along the lines of utility of the year for their community solar work and pushing tri-state for more renewable energy. So kudos to Kate Carson and all of you for working hard to make sure governments like us keep on that path. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, thanks for coming to our meeting. Okay, next, we will go to consideration impossible approval of Resolution 1358 in support of revitalizing D.H. Lawrence Ranch.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll go to item E, consideration impossible approval of the structure, scope of work, and timeline for the community hospital study committee. Councilmembers, Oscar.
Yes.
We do have members of the hospital here, thank you for being here, thank you for your patience on these long items. Now you know that we sure don't do it for the pay, right?
Yes, sir, we're at, I'm sorry, Mayor, I missed that, we're at Resolution 1357, the renewable energy.
We're on the item E.
Item, oh, going straight to that, I'm sorry.
It's late.
I apologize, it's late. Mr. Mayor, what you have there, I passed, sent out to you via email, my recommendations for moving forward with this committee. My intention here was just to provide a platform by which you could discuss it and take some concrete steps towards getting this thing going. You had told us at that joint meeting that this was important, you wanted to go forward with it subsequent to that. You reiterated that request, and so what we have here then is what I would recommend to you as a good starting point for organizing the committee. I've tried to make it as simple as possible. One, that the committee is an ad hoc committee, and it's in advisory. Second, that it comply with the open meetings law, all meetings be done in public, and that it also be organized according to Robert's rules of order, so that just, there's enough order. I'm recommending there a series of people, and I'm taking these recommendations from recommendations I got from the union, from Mr. Hofstetter, some recommendations I also got indirectly from the county manager, and also input I got from you, and that is that there'd be two members there representing the council. I mean, the council would, you know, name if it was council members or other people, staff, or people from the community, as you wish, the same for the county, and the same for the board. So if the board decided then to appoint people from the board, or appoint their executive staff to be on the committee, then they would have that decision to make, it would be their decision to make, that there also be their representation from the, from the union, two members from the union. I have heard subsequently from the union that they would think that, they would want there to be some distinction between the people who are, excuse me, well, I take that back, and also recommending two doctors, the union gave me some input, that there should be some distinction between the doctors that are in the community, as well as doctors that are actually contracted and are part of the hospital staff. And then I added at the very end, per the recommendation of the county manager, that there'd be someone from the community also named, and I just added to, with that, the caveat that it'd be a knowledgeable person. I've put out there the scope of work, generally the things that you would charge them to do, and that all these recommendations come back to you by January 1st. Among the recommendations that could be there, I left it totally open, among the recommendations that could be there would be what would happen then with that committee, there is some, there's been some discussion about whether or not it should continue as an ad hoc committee, would this be a permanent committee? Well, I would recommend to you that that'd be one of the questions that'd be given to that committee, so that, you know, all the bodies could consider that. Again, I only put that in front of you so that it serves as a, as a, the workbench, if you will, or the springboard for you to give some concrete action. Everyone's anxious to get going with this, certainly, we're ready for that, and so we stand, I stand for any direction, or you want to go with this.
And just a couple of quick questions, have you given this proposal to the hospital and to the county?
Yes, sir.
In response? I mean, other than what we heard tonight from the administration?
Well, the only response I got back was to add, from the county, was to add a community representative, and that's in there now. I shared it with the union, shared it with Mr. Hofstetter, we've been talking about it all over the weekend, and so that input has been reflected in this. You'll recall, last, at the last meeting, Mr. Weatherby passed out a, his recommended, a sort of one-sheet recommendation for how the committee should be structured, is charged, et cetera. I took a lot from there, including the structure, pretty much, it's there, from his recommendation, not everything that he recommended is on there. As you can see, my recommendations are a little more general. So anyway, to answer your question more directly, Councilman, yes, I've taken that input, I believe what you have there is a fair reflection of what, of that input that I got from staff, from the union, from the county.
Mr. Mayor?
And from you.
Would that include tonight's, you know, ask from Mr. Hofstetter, as far as putting it, the one thing I don't see on the list is an administrator? Would that be, or, would that be?
Sir, I would leave that in your hands, but the way it's structured there right now, that the board can designate that one of their representatives be their CEO.
Is there any other comments, questions? Is this good with the employees? I don't want to turn this into a long, just, if I can, just have a brief comment, if you guys have a comment on this?
We thought that this is a very fair view of this whole thing. We thought it was a head representation of each of the groups. The only suggestions that we had were that you consider that they be able to have an alternate if somebody's out sick, that, we're formalizing that in some fashion, that each organization, and the third one is we felt that it was important to have, as Oscar mentioned, representatives from both communities, and it started as a medical doctors, hospitalists, and we thought, as it was discussed with the union, the nurses and technicians, that because doctors and not hospitalists are also using the hospital and referring patients there, that there should be at least one voice there as well. The idea was to have a cross-section, and we think that you guys actually put together a good, a very good thing.
What about, do you have any reservations, or any reservations with regard to the actual administration position created?
I think, frankly, it's fair to, I know people think of it as the union and management being always adversarial, I know that that's the way it's been presented, I even heard that today from someone at the hospital, that's not the intent here. The intent here, though, is to have some equity there, and we thought, frankly, with the doctors, we needed to have a really big say in this, and that's why we thought that that third person would be, it would be good to place it within that community, let it be someone that, two of the doctors that, as I understand it, are hospitalists and one from, that's associated with the hospital, but is not a hospitalist, would give both of those communities a say in it, and it would, you'd have a good, you'd have a good balance between administration through the board, or if they chose to send the CEO or another administrative person, we felt that each group should have that say.
So I think, Oscar, this here, thank you, thank you very much. I think what we should, hold on one second, I think what we should do is have an official, who is officially representing the workers, the last thing we need is a room full, well, I'm representing the workers, and who is really the true spokesman, so I'm going to hope that amongst yourselves, you choose two representatives that we know, or your alternate, that we receive an email from you that, hey, this is going to be the alternate, and that the town and the county do the same thing, you know, so that we all, we all know who the appoint people are, so. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor Peralta. My concern with that proposal is that hospitalists are employees of a hospital, and so there may be a consideration to make there. Number two, I'm only hearing that one community member is being considered, now I understand Mr. Rodriguez wants to make sure it's an odd number, I'm wondering if we can increase that to maybe three community members? If Peter and Holy Cross and the union are really trying to do outreach, don't you think we need to broaden that just a little bit of the political union, hospital realm, and get it a little bit more out into the community? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be okay with that, Mr. Mayor.
I'm okay with that, I'll accept four, I think that as elected officials, we do represent the community, so, I mean, I think if you get too many people in there, then to try to come to some sort of plan is going to be a little bit more difficult.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
I would move to approve, Mr. Mayor, with regards to adding the hospital administrator as one of the positions within there. You guys are okay with that, correct?
Is a third, additional person or within the two?
Within the two.
Oh, that's their choice, yeah, we figured that should be.
But now, within the two, the only problem that I see...
Yeah, but it can be an administrator.
Well, the problem, the problem under discussion there is if you, the hospital board, now we're going to have three hospital...
Well, that's why I said, change the language from two hospital board representatives to two hospital representatives, so be it the board or an administrator.
I think part of the problem is we want to make sure, engage with the board members, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
So why not make it with one consistent being on there? One and one, one administrator, one board member.
So one hospital board member and one hospital administrator? I think that balances it, the administration.
Because the administration works hand in hand with the board, and vice versa.
And of course, the board can always appoint Peter as their representative. And of course, the board can always appoint Peter as their representative. It's, I mean, you know, the, I'm not sure what the intent is, but I think, I'm sure the hospital is gonna want an administrator there, the board. So if I was certainly on that board, I would want an administrator there plus an elected official, you know, to potentially, how does that affect the day-to-day operations? So... So was that in the form of a motion?
I'd put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Under discussion? Is there a second?
Motion.
And a second?
Oscar, on your two intergovernmental council members representatives, what was your intention there?
To provide for representation from other, from some of the outlying communities. And rather than to have somebody there from Angel Fire, Eagle Nest, Red River, Questa, as well as the town, I mean, which would add another four people to the committee, that there is a body right now that speaks for them. And in fact, this issue once went to them, that they would designate who that, who those people would be.
The only thing is, the town, the county's on there, the school districts are on there as well.
Yeah. So we could put a condition on there that it not be people who are already named, who already have seats here. Yeah, but the idea is that it be somebody not already at the table from the outlying communities be invited.
Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for your commitment to this issue.
And thanks for staying after hours with us. So...
I really enjoyed the...
Septage.
I did.
That's septage. That's just nothing but septage.
It's a different kind of blood.
Mr. Mayor, so it's clear to us what's gonna happen. So at the next council meeting, I, I'll reach out to everybody to get those names at this council meeting so that you can formally act to name those people, and we can get going. Okay?
Under matters on mayor council, anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmembers, Councilmember Abeka?
Yes, I have three items. I'll make it quick. The first one, we already covered. That's the idea of rescinding the library card fee because it's not working. Number two, let's set up a workshop to discuss the Echo Park. Let's do it towards the end of November so that the folks can have an opportunity to draft out a business plan, and we're not wasting time, but just so that we're putting it on the radar screen, Oscar?
Yes, sir.
And then number three, we have some old dilapidated tennis courts at Kit Carson Park. Let's look at the feasibility of converting those to a dog park. That was an input from constituent Rena Rosequist, and I think it's an excellent idea. It would take very little, pull out the asphalt, throw some pea gravel, put in a couple of benches, and we got a dog park. People are gonna argue, we go to the dog park at the stray hards. Typically, you walk your dog at Kit Carson Park. You need a park there, not it over there. So, so let's look at that, too.
I think that'd be a next ideal.
Yes, sir.
Since we're not using the tennis courts there, and they certainly, it'd be an easy way to, easy fix to get them used. I don't think it's gonna cost a lot of money, so I certainly support that. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a...
A second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.